Councilmember Snipper is in attendance remotely. Everybody has decided that maybe they'd like to try that, too, and attend a council meeting from Florida or other places, so we'll see how this goes. Are there any council comments? Councilmember Wright?
Just wanted to remind people about two events on this Sunday. There's first the run for the Safe Box to School. Interesting thing I learned, just to make sure everyone's aware of, because I went to sign up for the 5K. There's not only a 5K, there's a one-mile run for anyone over eight, and there's a quarter-mile run for anybody. So I signed my daughter up for the quarter-mile run and my wife up for the 5K run. And I helped with the quarter-mile run with my daughter. And then the second thing to remind people about is on Sunday, from 1:00 to 5:00, is the Historic Tacoma House and Garden Tour over in North Tacoma. And you can go to the HTI website to get more details and buy tickets. That's it for me.
Okay. Anybody else? Councilmember Seaman?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make sure everybody's had a chance to see the mosaic that's being created on the side of the library. I think it's incredible to see the -- how it's coming together, and I think people would be interested in seeing it at this stage rather than waiting until the end.
Anybody else? Okay.
I have a comment.
Oh, sorry. I forgot. You didn't wave your hand.
I didn't wave my hand. I'm sorry. This is Councilmember Snipper on the phone. I want to -- first, I want to thank everyone. I had a -- for those who don't know, I had a bike car interaction with me on the bike and somebody in the car, and it didn't end as well for me as the car. They weren't going very fast, so I'm not badly injured, but it'll take a while for me to be back. I want to thank all the friends and neighbors who have been extremely helpful to me this last week. It happened a week ago, last Saturday. I hope to make it to the council meetings in person, but since I wasn't able to do that tonight, I really want to thank the Communications Department for spending time this afternoon, trying out some different things, and then tonight trying it out. I can hear you all pretty well, and I'm, you know, watching you on the Internet, so, you know, don't do anything you wouldn't want me to see. And I do have one question for the city manager. I received a note from Mr. Walker on Flower Avenue concerned about the housing rental licenses, and I was hoping you could get the city manager could get back to me on this. They now expire on December 31st, and I believe the old ones expired on the last day of February. So the net result is that the landlords paid twice. They paid January and February, or at least it appears that way. And I was wondering if I could get some clarification. It doesn't have to be now, of course, but if you happen to know the answer, that'd be great.
Councilmember Snipper, I'll check with staff tomorrow and send you an email if that would be okay.
Yeah, that would be perfectly fine. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Anything else, Councilmember Snipper?
Nope.
All right. So there are no additional agenda items. I'd just like to give a brief scheduling update, make sure everybody's aware of upcoming Next Monday, May 4th, in addition to additional reconciliation on the budget and some various voting items, we are going to have a presentation and then a work session discussion on a proposed development project on New Hampshire Avenue for a car wash at 6415 New Hampshire Avenue. And then the following Monday, May 11th, we've scheduled, I believe, yeah, we've scheduled a resolution on that development project. Also, on the 11th, we have our second FY-10 budget public hearing, and we're going to have a presentation on the results of the Missing Sidewalk Study and ADA Compliance Plan, and also a resolution adopting the strategic plan. Then on Monday, May 18th, we're scheduled to have first reading ordinances adopting various FY-10 items, the tax rate stormwater budget, various budgets and pay plans, and second reading is scheduled for the following Tuesday, May 26th, because Monday, May 25th, is Memorial Day. And that will get us through May and the budget. And then the first meeting in June is Monday, June 1st, and we have scheduled a presentation on the Tacoma Langley Sector Plan. So that will take us through the next month. The next item on the agenda is adoption of minutes for February 17th, 23rd, and March 3rd. Would somebody like to move adoption of minutes?
Move.
Moved by Councilmember Wright, seconded by Councilmember Barry. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays, ayes have it. And the next item is public comment period. If anybody would like to make any comments on anything that's not on our special session agenda, and please...
Can I speak here?
Yes, and please identify yourself, and please try and keep your comments to three minutes.
I do my best. My name is Susan Lillieauer. I'm a homeowner of 232 Manor Circle. I am an ex-soul neighbor, the neighbor of wonderful families who have been in need of help for years, who are desperately trying to move on good homes. I have a wonderful, beloved neighbor who is a white, queer, first family. He has two children, a stay-home wife, and he hasn't worked in six months. His construction is bad, and he's terrified, not about his work, but he's terrified about these taxes. I, myself, am having to breathe your siblings paying these taxes, and every year you say you can't cut anything. There's nothing you can cut. Let me show you something you can cut. I got this in the mail today. It says, "Budget proposal for Florida Times." Yes. It's in color. Eight years I've lived in this town, and this is, let me tell you, this product is a valuable product. The Tacoma Park Newsletter itself has a color. Tacoma Park Newsletter is out. I love it. I appreciate it, Jen. There is no reason for this to be in color. Secondly, and I'm sorry to say this, but I'm glad you're here. I have been driving out at night, doing things, going to the store, and I see police cars that are parked by the side of the road, and it looks like they're taking care of the people. And it literally looks like we have police officers who have taken them out in their police cars. And you're telling me that we need -- this is a really a village, a very sweet, wonderful village. We call it a city, and it's fun that it's incorporated, but we have 17,000 people and you're telling me that we need a full service police department. I defy you to explain to me, I've lived here for eight years, why we have -- I'll sit further back. Why there is so much -- why, how there's --
This is not!
That we justify this level of --
Hang on just a second. We'll see. Got it?
Now we're set.
Okay.
Yeah. That we justify this level of service, and the police officers that I see don't appear to have enough to do. They may or may not be qualified. I'm not saying they're not qualified, but we don't seem to have enough activity to justify it. And given that my community, my beloved neighbors and myself, we're hurting behind closed doors. We are, you know, we are struggling to -- I'm a writer and an activist, okay? And, you know, I'm a little bit different than -- I realize, you know, we have attorneys in Tacoma Park, we have nonprofits in Tacoma Park, but we tend to have people who are working for the better -- I like to hope that we have people who are working towards the betterment of the community. We're getting squeezed. We're not making it, and there has to be something. You know, it's good that you have the homeowner's tax credit. Everybody I know uses it. Why don't you cut the taxes just a little bit? And then you wouldn't have to give us such big cuts in our homeowner's tax credits. We're -- this is reaching a crisis level, where I'm afraid that some of my fellow neighbors are going to lose -- I'm not worried about losing my home, thank God, but I am frightened enough for what's happening next door. And when I see these people who are, you know, they're families, for God's sakes. They have little children, like, I think, six and two, and he hasn't worked in six months, and he's frightened. You can see it in his face. You can see it, you know, when he's there all day long, Monday through Friday. He doesn't have anywhere -- he doesn't, you know, and he's taking care of a whole family. And this, you know, we have to be a priority, and that's what I want you to do. I want you to remember that when you're spending this money, please, don't send us this in color again. This just sent me off to over the edge, over the top when I saw this. Love it? Love the newsletter? Don't put it in color again. You've got to find something to help us, because we're hurting. And that's all I have to say to you. We're hurting.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Councilmember Seaman?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to respond. I certainly appreciate your coming tonight with your concerns, and I have heard your concerns about the tax rate and the difficulty many of our residents are facing in the city. I've been, in the past, one of the biggest critics of our police department, and I would say that I think under Chief Rucucci, our police have been doing a very good job. And I think where in the past I had concerns about maybe the work ethic in the department, I think they have a very good work ethic now. And I think Chief Rucucci, if he actually thought that anyone was not doing their job, I know, very confident that he would address that, and I'm sure that he will look into your concerns tonight. But overall, I think the underlying issue you brought forward is an important thing for the council to consider tonight and as we finish this budget process. Thank you.
I've seen them asleep in the cars at seven or eight o'clock at night, asleep at seven or eight o'clock at night. It's when it's -- if this was in the wintertime, I say November to December, January-ish, but it's dark outside, early in the evening. This was not midnight, this was not three o'clock.
Without specific examples, that's hard to follow up on, but I, again, like I say, I think your underlying concern is important, and I thank you.
Thanks. Is there anybody else who'd like to make any public comment?
My name's Sabrina Baron. I'm the president of Historic Tacoma. I want to thank Councilmember Wright for mentioning the House and Garden Tour. That's why I'm here this evening, is to plug the House and Garden Tour. It's coming up Sunday, May 3rd, 1:00 to 5:00 p.m., rain or shine, in North Tacoma, and there are going to be some real gems on the tour this year. Lots of houses that lots of people, I think, have been dying to see the inside of. I know I have for a long time. And tickets on sale in advance at local merchants now and then. The Co-op, Mark's Kitchen Culture Shop, if you buy them in advance, they're $15, they're $20 a day of the tour, and the day of the tour, you can pick up your brochure, and we'll be selling tickets in Jackie Park on the day of the tour. So I hope everybody will come out and support this community institution that's now in its 36th year in the community here. I want to mention just one other thing that I heard about this afternoon. I got some very shocking and distressing news this afternoon, that apparently Wayne Goldstein, who is the president of Montgomery Preservation, Inc., and who has been an activist in civic affairs and preservation in this county, unexpectedly and suddenly passed away this afternoon. He's been here to testify in front of this council a number of times, and I don't have any more details at this point in time, but it's a huge loss for communities and for citizens and for preservation in this county. Wayne was tireless, and I understand he was on the way to a county council hearing to testify this afternoon when he collapsed. So if everybody had that family in their thoughts, I'm sure it would be appreciated as we try to work through this real blow to the preservation community today. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll certainly keep his family in our thoughts. And if you have any more information, if you could share that with us, we'd appreciate it. Any other comments? Public comment? Okay, seeing none. Is the city manager's comments?
Just one item this evening. Obviously, over the last few days, there's been a lot in the news media about the outbreak of swine flu. I've left at your place at the diocese this evening an informational update from the Council of Governments. I also would like to ask Chief Rucucci if he could just make a few remarks about kind of the city's preparations in case there is an event that is affecting our operations.
If I can just -- I didn't see anything about that here. Don't have it.
I gave them, asked them to be passed down earlier this evening.
Mr. Snipper here. He's been sitting on them.
Thank you.
What you have in front of you is what we received from CAG today. This morning, when I returned to the office, we pulled out our Continuity of Operations Plan, which is known as our COOP, for pandemic influenza ends, on which we'd be using in this case. The first phase, when we get the warning that we got today from the federal government, is to review the plan. Each department head was given a copy of the plan today to make sure it was up to date and to review it with their staff. Myself and the city manager spoke this afternoon several times, back and forth, about what we need to do at this point. I have made contact with Montgomery County, and they will keep us updated. They have just earned preliminary stages, as we are at this time. We will be updated every day by the federal government and through CAG and through our contacts here in the county. We have decided we will place the situation update on the website tomorrow for our citizens to read, and we will continue to update it, and we will put it in advisory app tomorrow, letting people know that this is on the website to our residents on our email network. And as things progress, and hopefully they will be for the positive, we will continually keep you updated through the city manager on what we're doing.
Thank you, Chief.
The only other thing I've just mentioned, since we seem to have a distribution problem earlier, is the agenda packet for Thursday night's council meeting was also left at your place at the diocese this evening.
Okay. And until Councilmember Snipper is able to return in person to a meeting, I arranged that I would take him his packet and whatever else is distributed, so if we put it at his place, I'll take it to him.
Great, thank you.
We will now move to our special session, and the first item on the special session is a consent agenda, and there are five items on here, all of them resolutions for reappointments and appointments to various committees. Would somebody like to move the consent agenda? Moved by Councilmember Clay, seconded by Councilmember Wright. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Councilmember Snipper, any nays? The consent agenda passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda is a second reading ordinance authorizing execution of a contract with a consultant to assist with matters related to the proposed relocation of Washington Adventist Hospital. And the city attorney is here with us, and maybe if you'd like to brief us on what we need to know on this and any changes since first reading, and then we'll proceed from there.
Thank you. Good evening, councilmembers. As you know, this is a second reading, meanwhile, which means that you had already introduced this legislation last week. The changes to this procurement, which would allow the city to enter into a contract for professional consulting services involving health care, and it's in the wake of the proposed relocation of the Washington Adventist Hospital. The changes from the first reading are that a different Maryland consultant has been added to the team that the proposed contractor has arranged, and the person that's been added is a PhD named Mr. Atkinson, and he is somebody who we had actually interviewed for the consultant as well, and we were very impressed with him. We just didn't think that he had the sort of range of skills that PDA, Inc. has, but for the piece having to do with the certificate of need proceedings and the statistical and mathematical analysis and the financial analysis, he is considered very, very excellent. We have found that many people with those kinds of skills are already conflicted out in this situation because so many hospitals are involved in the proceedings, but he was one that we had really thought would be excellent. So at this point in time, PDA, Inc. has taken him on as part of their team, which I think will be to our benefit, and we thank the council because it was you who suggested that the Maryland piece had to be beefed up as far as the certificate of need knowledge. And I think Dr. Atkinson will accomplish that. The other thing that was changed is also as a result of some comments that were made at first reading, and that had to do with a markup of overhead costs, and that has been eliminated in this proposal as well. But in general, the proposal is, as you know, a not-to-exceed $60,000 proposal. We actually hope it will come in below that. It's an hourly contract. We're not paying the $60,000 upfront. It's entirely based on the work that the consultant actually does for us. We certainly hope it will not cost all of that, but we want to have the authorization to use that if necessary, because it really depends how far out we have to go with this process. Our hope is that we will get help developing and negotiating the memorandum of need with the hospital, and that will make it -- and we want to do that in the early phase of the certificate of need proceedings, so that we will not have to get embroiled in the certificate of need proceedings themselves, which will go on for many, many, many months, maybe the whole year. So our hope is to get in at the front end, try to have a good understanding with the hospital that really does protect our community's health interests. You've heard the presentation from our Health Impact Committee, that they are especially concerned that the relocation of the hospital will adversely affect the less well-healed members of our community, those who are either uninsured or underinsured. And the expertise that we will get from this healthcare consultant will make sure that we protect those people from the risks associated with this relocation. I'm happy to answer any questions the council has.
If you can first just say a little bit more about the timing on this, in terms of how quickly it would get going and potential for either shorter or longer range timing of how things would possibly come to a conclusion.
Thank you. Briefly, the hospital has already filed its petition, filed it on April 10th. The response to that petition by those who are interested parties or others goes in 30 days after that petition is docketed. Docketing doesn't occur until the staff of the commission have found that there's adequate information, sufficient information, in the petition itself. They've already had a whole first process where they've asked Washington Adventist Hospital to provide a significant amount of additional information, because that will be necessary before they think that the petition will be docketed. So that process has begun, and probably the answers to that are not going to be in for another 30 days, responses maybe beyond that. There could be an additional set of questions that will be asked, and then same kind of cycle of more answers, more questions. Sometimes this goes for several months, sometimes as much as six months. At the time docketing actually occurs, when the answers are sufficient, then we would have 30 days to file our objection and request to be considered as an interested party.
And we anticipate, as part of the process that we're talking about right now, for us, that we would hope to have a memorandum of understanding with Washington Adventist Hospital, Adventist Healthcare, addressing the needs for what we see remaining on the site and any other items that we feel we need assurances on before it gets to docketing.
I hope, but I don't think we can ensure that. Certainly, the earlier it gets in, the more, you know, the earlier we reach that memorandum, the less we'll have to be involved in the ongoing proceedings. Docketing doesn't mean the end of the case.
Right.
Then there's the adjudication of the case, based on all of the various alternative things that have been filed, and, you know, it could be several months for that to occur. So we really don't know how long the hospital is going to be involved in this, but my sense for our own community's sake is the sooner we can get involved and engaged in a good negotiation with the hospital, the sooner we can basically make a judgment of how deeply we're going to have to get involved in the proceedings. But there's no way of knowing that in advance. What I do know is that the quality of our, both our memorandum of understanding and, if we have to do it, our petition as an interested party will highly depend on the value of the quality of the assistance we get from people with healthcare expertise, because otherwise, we're really just at the surface, being, you know, a bit too superficial about what we're asking for.
And can you just say a little bit more about the potential for us getting involved in the certificate of need process? Remind us of the two different ways that that could happen? One is more involved than the other, and what we, kind of where we are now?
Right. There's sort of full-party status, and that's where you actually, you know, are in the adjudication, and you can bring in evidence, you get notice of everything, and then ultimately you can appeal the decision to the courts if you're unhappy with it. Another role is where you are less involved. You're more of an outsider, but you are able to submit your comments to the board and be heard, but you're certainly not a full party. And it's the latter role that the commission already changed the regulations to allow a municipality that's losing a hospital to be a participating entity. That's, they actually put a regulation in place to allow that kind of a role.
And that was at our request.
At our request, exactly. But what I need to caution you about is nobody's ever been that. There is not one single entity who's ever been a participating entity. So we don't have much ability to judge by any precedent how that will play out. The interested party status is one that has been used many times.
Okay. Question? Councilmember Barry?
Is it your understanding that the hospital will open Is it your understanding that the hospital will open their books to us and allow us and our consultant to analyze the uncompensated care volume that the hospital currently has? And I suppose also the compensated care that might involve residents of the community and residents outside? You know, the concern is, is that they may say very generously that we'll leave X behind, but without knowing how many procedures, how many people they see, how many people they are likely to see in the future, it's going to be very difficult for us to determine what kind of configuration, staffing, procedures will be necessary in order to meet the minimum requirements of the community.
Yeah, no, that's a very good question. First, Dr. Atkinson will be very skilled at being able to find that data in public records, because a lot of that reporting has to already go to the Healthcare Commission and the Cost Review Commission, which are two state agencies that require a great deal of reporting on those kinds of subjects. So a lot of that data is there, but my office, for example, wouldn't be skilled at knowing how to pull it out and analyze it. So a lot of that's there. The way that that type of discovery is done under this commission is not so much like you would in a civil court, it's more you ask the commission to ask those questions for you. And we can certainly do that even without additional status being determined. You know, right now, I've already been asking some questions on behalf of the community to the commission, and we can get some of that data. My sense is the kind of things you're asking about are publicly required to be reported, and we should be able to get those. In addition to the commission as a vehicle to get the information, I think, you know, you're suggesting, I think you're right, that in our memorandum of understanding negotiations, we should be able to ask of the hospital certain questions so that we know, you know, what they're basing some of their decisions on. You know, they may say they can't afford to do X, but we can say, well, show us. You know, let's see how you come to that conclusion, maybe there's other ways of looking at it. Again, it's something we can do with a lot more skill and a lot more competence if we have an expert.
Right, so we might be able to say, to counter something that they say, okay, you need three doctors and two nurse practitioners, the data might indicate to us that you need four doctors and 12 nurse practitioners, and we would be in a position to make that kind of case to them based on the information that the consultant and others provided us?
Exactly. And as we were sort of thinking about the memorandum of understanding, we were painfully aware, we didn't know the answers to those questions, so we couldn't, we couldn't make those judgments. But with an expert, we will be able to make those judgments. I also want to give one other very, very concrete example that I think has enormous impact on the community, and that is whether we get to keep an emergency department or emergency room. And the hospital, in its current application petition with the commission, the healthcare commission, basically just talks about an urgent care clinic, not an emergency room. And they were kind of getting us ready that they might do that by explaining that they were having all these licensing problems with their one in Germantown, and that they have trouble getting Medicare federal reimbursements to make that work in Germantown. Well, this expert who we're suggesting should be hired by us has been coming up with some very helpful ideas about how to deal with this problem. For example, if the hospital leaves behind some rehab beds, which it said it wanted to do in one of its PowerPoint presentations to the community, then it wouldn't be a standalone emergency room, then it would be part of an existing hospital, because hospitals get defined by their inpatient beds. So, for example, we would be able to come back and say, well, wait a minute, we don't want just an urgent care facility, we need a full emergency room, and we think there's a way to do it. But again, we need the expertise of people who work in the healthcare field to know that there is a solution out there.
Councilmember Roberts.
I'm going to move away from that substantive discussion and go to a procedural discussion on the management of the contract. I take it that GSA MOBIS is a pricing structure that the General Services Administration adheres to, and that Dr. Atkinson is not on MOBIS, and that's why his hourly rate is 330 as opposed to the top principal in charge of 234. And I see that the Task One comments are estimated at 22,000, and the MOU or the second task are 32,000, and then there's a $6,000 negotiations trip, which equals 60,000. So my question is, how do you propose to manage the contract to make up for the increased charge of Dr. Atkinson? And do you see it being a wash in the end, or will you, do you even feel that use of his specific information may save money or be a replacement for more detailed research that would have had to have been done, something along those lines?
Yeah, I asked that exact question of Nancy Lane, the principal of PDA Inc., and she was comfortable that the higher hourly rate that Atkinson charges will be offset by the lesser number of hours that are going to be required because of the depth of his expertise. She seems quite confident in that.
Okay, and the estimates, the 22, 32, and 6, are those estimates, you had mentioned before that you were hopeful that we would come in under 60,000. Do you have some degree of hope that that will really be the case, or what do you base that hope on?
Well, it is our hope that we won't need to spend the 6. We're hoping that the negotiations can be done by people here, including lawyers and perhaps city manager at the table, and that instead we'll get the advice from the experts and go into the meeting well-briefed rather than having to actually have the person up here. But we wanted to have that flexibility of that extra 6 in case we thought it was, you know, more prudent to have somebody at the table with us. But we're getting such a good experience with Councilmember Sniffer's experiment that maybe we can do some things by conference calling in and other electronic ways of having meetings. So we'll see. But that, my hope is that we won't have to spend that 6, but we wanted it in there if it was wise to use it.
Okay, last question. Do you have any kind of estimate for how much Dr. Atkinson's hours would tally to?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Stevens.
Thank you. First of all, I would like to move the ordinance for the second reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Moved by Councilmember.
And I would like to thank you for addressing the issues that we voiced the first reading. I think for me, you have answered the questions that we had and addressed in an appropriate way, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments? Councilmember Wright.
So first, I wanted to make sure that the 60,000 not to exceed includes expenses. So is it both, is the 60,000 both the hourly rates and reimbursable expenses combined together? Doesn't explicitly, I didn't see it explicitly saying that in here.
Yeah, that's a good question. We don't have the contract itself here, that'll be written and authorized, you know, after tonight if it's approved. City Manager Matthews, do you remember how that was thought about?
Yes, if, on page three of the proposal, it notes that the estimated cost of services basically is all-inclusive, including reimbursable expenses with the exception of HSRC data. So that seems to be the only exception, Councilmember Wright.
And that's the $2,000 we may have to pay if that data's not, if we can't get that as a public agency? Do we have any sense of whether we are entitled to that as a public?
I have not researched that yet.
I mean, I remain concerned about the amount of money that this is, and I really hope that we can use the advice judiciously so that we, I know, I know it's not to exceed $60,000, but that, I would hope we would actually be able to come in under that. The thing that makes me lean towards voting for this is I think the issue is of significant concern for the city and one of the most important things we need to make sure we get right in terms of negotiating and making policy for the city. And that's the main thing that makes me lean towards voting for it, because I think it's very important that we get this right for what could be generations of people who live in Tacoma Park. And I'm, I think, willing to take the risk of spending the money that this is going to help us get it more right. So that would be my.
I hope you're not intending a pun on your name here.
I was just thinking about, I guess, a fairly recent instance where we had a consultant help on a project with the Metro Development, and we had Nelson Nygaard. Does anybody remember approximately what that consultant cost?
My recollection, Mayor, is that it was in the range of $25,000 to $30,000 for that piece of it.
Okay. We've, does anybody have any more comments on the resolution? Councilmember Wright.
I appreciate you raising that example, and I think it is wise for us to use consultants when issues are important. I wouldn't necessarily point to the consultants, at least from my perspective, that we've used so far in the metro as being stellar and really helping us get it right. I think the consultant who helped us run that, that open session with people and sent out that survey before was an abomination, and I find Nelson Nygaard helpful in helping us think through some of the issues, but I don't necessarily think their plan that they put together was really particularly helpful in moving the process forward. So I guess that's like an example to me of where we spent money and we didn't get it really right, and so I hope, again, that in spending this money, it helps us really get it right.
Any other comments? Any public comment on this second reading ordinance authorizing execution of a contract with a consultant to assist on the hospital matter? It's a second reading ordinance that's identical to the first reading ordinance, which we passed last week. We don't have a copy of the ordinance in our packet. The deputy city manager is upstairs bringing that down. Does anybody want to have that in front of them before we vote? Councilmember Wright does. So somebody make a comment and give the deputy manager one more minute to get down here with that.
Okay, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Sniffer, what would you like to say?
The only thing I would add, I think the discussion has been very helpful in clarifying some issues. The only thing I would add is I do think there is urgency to move this forward. The clock is really ticking, and I'm concerned that the city won't have enough time to, you know, get materials and get a response going and get the hospital to sign on to something. So while this may, there are some concerns that were well-described in the discussion, I lean towards moving ahead just so that we can not miss the train. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Clay.
I just want to say that I appreciate how complex it was to put together the different parties that we needed to get all the components together and to get them to work together. And I know it was hard around here to find somebody who didn't have a conflict of interest. I understand the person I recommended had a conflict of interest. And I saw from all the paperwork that was put forth that we were able to assemble the names of the, of the, of the folks that were in the area that didn't have the widest variety of skills to bring all that together. I think it's critical that we're going to have to have this group to help us get through this process. I don't think we'll, we'll make it without them. And I, I definitely am aware that we haven't had the greatest luck with, with our contractors. I, in particular, really dislike the traffic study contractors, which, you know, I really wanted us to hire, but, you know, maybe that's just something to keep in mind as we work with them. I think, you know, I'm also really familiar with Nelson and Nygaard, and they're a very top-quality transportation organization. I think part of it is just that we're going to have to match our expectations to the possibilities, and that's, and that's part of what the issue is. And so we may come to the end of this and not feel like we got everything I want, that we wanted, but, but part of it is that our expectations are going to have to fit into the possibilities as well.
And I just thought of a consultant that we did have, I think, very good results from, and that was the consultant on the community center construction, the Sharon, however it's pronounced.
Well, the New Hampshire Avenue Sharette, I thought those folks were great.
Yeah, so we've had some good consultants, mixed results.
And so far, I'm like in the sidewalk studying people.
So everybody now has the ordinance in front of them?
I've read it, thanks to some extra comments. I appreciate that.
Okay, so since this is second reading ordinance, will the clerk please call a roll?
Mayor Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Barrett.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens.
Aye.
Councilmember Sniffer.
Aye.
Councilmember Wright.
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you all.
I want to thank everyone, because we are on a very tight timeframe, and I was hoping it would be so decisive and systematic. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move to our budget work session, and we're right on time. And the first item is a discussion with the Recreation Department, and I see a lot of recreation folks here.
I don't recognize a couple.
And so maybe just to make sure, you all can start off with introductions, just to make sure everybody knows everybody is.
Absolutely. Good evening. Most of you know me, everyone does. Deborah Hidiven, I'm the director of the department. This began my ninth year as the director. We have a couple of new folks, but we're going to start at this end of the table.
My name is Fay Wright, I am the Recreation Supervisor for Teens. I have been here for a total of three months. I came from coming to Community Center as a director, and previously from there, I came from New York City.
Good evening to you all, I'm Gregory Clark, Assistant Recreation Director, and I've had the pleasure to be here three years.
I'm Paula Lasowski, and I'm the Manager of the Seniors Program, and I've been here about a year and a half.
My name is Carrie Anjesczki, I have been working with the city for about six years now, and I'm the Recreation Supervisor for school programs, and also do special events and pop programs. I put the word "special" together.
Good evening, it's good seeing everybody as well. My name is Eric Roche, I'm the new Recreation Manager for City's Tacoma Park. My background is coming from Kansas City Reserve, where I worked over 10 years with the Kansas City Recreation Department, and kind of worked my way to the rankings, if you will, and I'm really enjoying myself here at Tacoma Parks.
Good, welcome to everybody.
Thank you. We have a document here that we're going to refer to a little bit, I have people are going to say a few things, but really, we're very interested in your questions and comments regarding the budget or anything that we have presented here in the work session document. We too, like the other department heads, have, have been tracking the council's strategic plan in our plans for the next year. So we've, we've addressed the three areas of sustainability, livability, and quality service for citizens. And I want to concentrate on a couple of programs that we are prepared to talk about, and then again, we can talk about whatever you'd like. But one of the areas that we plan to have a major emphasis in the next year is in the livability area. One of the things the council had asked for numerous occasions is increasing volunteerism in the city. And we feel like we've had a really good year in that regard, and I've got a chart here which categorizes the kind of volunteer and the number of hours in the area they worked in. We worked with the Recreation Committee for a basketball league, and I'm going to have Gregory talk about that in a minute. But as you can see, we have used volunteers quite a bit, which allows us to do a lot more at, you know, a reduced cost, let's say. more at, you know, a reduced cost, let's say. Our biggest area was with the basketball league. We had an enormous response from the community, and, you know, I would like to thank the Recreation Committee because they really were beating the bushes and getting people excited, and I believe we had a very successful year with that. Another area that we're really growing in is in outreach, and we're doing that with our community outreach, youth outreach, and also our seniors outreach. And I wanted... We've attached a flyer here, attachment number one, and it's called the Silver Foxes Flyer. If you could take a look at that. Paula's going to speak to you about her outreach to the seniors in the community with that program.
Hello. One of the things I wanted to do this past year is start thinking about having a senior advisory group, and it was in its planning stages because, as good as I am and as creative as I might be, I don't want to dictate to the seniors what I think they should have. I want them to have input into the program and hear what their needs are and what they want. So this year, just before the new year, we started in November with our first meeting, and it's been going pretty strong. We meet once a month, usually the second Friday of the month, and the number of participants is growing, but I really appreciate the input I've been getting from the seniors. Most of what they've told me, I've been able to implement into the program. What I do is, what you're seeing here is the second edition. It's just a one-page little flyer that I do, and I encapsulate like three months' worth of meetings, and then just pick the highlights, and then hand this out to seniors in the program so they can see what the advisory group is doing and how it's affecting their program. This is all volunteers, the seniors from Victory Tower, from Franklin Apartments, and the community at large, and so I'm trying to get a real good cross-section of what they need and want in the community. One of the things that they have suggested is that we start having the meetings in a rotating cycle where we do one at Victory Tower, one at Franklin Apartments, and then one at the Community Center. And that way, they don't have to travel all the time, just to the Community Center, and it might bring more people from that particular housing community down to the meeting so I can get more viewpoints and input.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Paula, but it was this group that originally brought to light the issue of the transportation with the ride on bus?
Right, yeah. I have to give credit to Colleen DePaul and some other seniors who were really instrumental in pushing for a change in the bus route. That would actually bring a lot of seniors from Victory Tower to the Community Center, to the library, to the pool, and it would just be more advantageous to some of the seniors in this community. And the idea first came about here at the Community Center. It was proposed to me, "What do you think of this?" And I thought, well, you know, let's pursue it, and we had people come from Montgomery County ride on bus. The first meeting took here, took place here, and from then on, it was, you know, the seniors really took hold of that, and I really applaud them.
Thank you, Paula. The other area we're really taking a look at, the council had asked us to maximize the use of facilities. We're able to break that down into our community centers and the Recreation Center on New Hampshire Avenue, the Piney Branch Pool, and the fields. We have compiled some data for you from January through March 31st, which is in a table on page four. I know that there's been some curiosity about how much the center's been used. Now, this data was taken from our new software, and it took me about five minutes to get this, which was just heavenly, I have to say, and this is now our baseline, I think, as we go forward. We picked a three-month period because the software went live in the middle of December. So this is going to give us different ways to slice the information, and if you're interested in any other kind of aspect, we can look at that as we go forward. We did attach... Attachment number two is the... We did a comparison of local jurisdictions and what their fees are, and I say here that we're not recommending anything at this time, but I do think that with some of the discussion about increasing our revenues, that there has been a curiosity about ways that we could do that, and we have recommended in the past, looking at our fees. So we have provided reference for you to look at other jurisdictions. As you know, we've been very active with the Piney Branch Pool in helping that get off the ground, and our programs have participated in using the pool, our after-school program. We tried to get the teens interested, and administratively, the staff has been helping with the marketing, and we've been really excited about seeing the success that it's had. Another area is when we talk about maximizing the use of fields, it's kind of a catch-22 for us. We have a huge demand for the fields, and there's a great wear and tear on the field, so we're trying to find the tipping point, as it were, of where we're not overusing them, but we're meeting the needs in the community. So I think it was Councilmember Barry last year had suggested that we put some numbers together for who uses the fields, which is at the bottom of page four, and the numbers, as you can see, with baseball, softball, soccer, and football, it's over 3,200. Maybe it's not that many. I didn't do the math very well. And that's all for that area. Talking about engaged, responsive, and service-oriented organization, one thing we've been talking about for a couple of years is increasing partnerships. I think we've had a really good year in this area. We have, if you look at attachment number three, we've listed out the partners, and it's getting longer every year. I did ask the staff to briefly discuss three of the partnerships so you can understand how we're reaching out to the community and how these groups are helping us meet greater needs that we don't have, that we maybe don't have the expertise to do ourselves. So we're going to start with Fay. There is a flyer that goes with what she's going to talk about, which is the family night. We just had one last week. So Fay, why don't you talk about that?
Okay. At Tacoma Park Middle School, with the Recreation Department here and a few other organizations, we actually get together four times a year, and we organize a family night for the community. We actually just had an event last week, which was in regards to resources that the parents were asking for. At each event that we have, we have an evaluation at the end, and based on the evaluation, the next family event that we have is how we program it. So at the event that we had before this one, plenty of parents were discussing that they didn't know what to do with their children for the summer. So that's why this theme was on summer resources for the children. Everyone that is involved, we actually get together before we put everything together. We organize to see who is going to be responsible for what. The Recreation Department, we are usually responsible for the refreshments. We're responsible for the activities, the games, flyers, and usually some of the other organizations are responsible for bringing in the vendors and the speakers when we have the event. I'll open that.
Just want to add one thing. This last week, Captain Corsi was a guest speaker from the Police Department. He spoke to the group about gang awareness. So the idea is that we work with the schools to bring, you know, they have a great handle on parents and families and bring them in with other resource to try to jointly address the different needs and interests of the community. So we're having a pretty good success with that program. We anticipate continuing that next year. Paula has another program to brag about as a partnership with Montgomery County, and I'll let her speak to that.
Something I'm rather proud of, kind of, it arose like a phoenix from the ashes. It was kind of a dying program, and we revitalized it. It's actually a very win-win situation, both for the community and for the Recreation Department. It's called the Bone Builders Exercise Program. I don't know if any of you are familiar with it. It's sponsored by the Montgomery County Department of Health and Human Services. They train and provide the volunteer instructors. It doesn't cost us anything. They are volunteer instructors, and they come in, and it's a program that was based on Tufts University research studies, and it's evidence-based program found to improve bone density. It really works. It also improves balance. It improves dexterity and muscle tone. So it's a really important program to have for the seniors, and they really enjoy it. But when I first started here, I would set up the room, and there might be four, or five, or six chairs set up, and that would be the class, including the instructor. Their maximum, what they wanted, was between 12 and 15 participants. Within this past year, not only did we get up to the 12 to 15 participants in that session, but we exceeded it, and we had up to 24, and that was too many for that class. So we've just opened a second edition of that class, a second session, and we've already gone to maximum of that. We have about 18, although they're still accepting some people. But it's really, really a wonderful program. It's growing. It's become very important to the seniors here, and I'm just glad that we've got it to grow and to keep going on. It's a wonderful program.
And I just want to add, it's a free program to the seniors, and each class is two days a week, so they get extra exercise. It's not just, you know, once a week. So they make a commitment to twice a week, and it sounds like the seniors have really responded to that. The third partnership, Gregory's going to talk a little bit about the winter basketball. Now, I know you've heard somewhat from other sources, but we're going to tell you the real deal here. But Gregory wants to talk about it.
The partnership between the Tacoma Park Recreation Department, Tacoma Park Recreation Committee, and the Long Branch Athletic Association, in my eyes, was extremely successful. The partnership was a win-win for the city, the Recreation Department, the Recreation Committee, and Long Branch community, and most importantly, for our citizens that participate. We had close to 470 young people that we were able to provide services for. There was approximately 80 volunteer coaches, scorekeepers, and timers that participated in the program, and a lot of the recruitment of these coaches and volunteers, I must give credit to our own Tacoma Park Recreation Committee, who did a wonderful job, wonderful job in coming in and offering ideas and assisting in the development of this league. And overall, it was a win-win for our community. It's also allowed us to not duplicate services, to pool our resources, and provide a very valuable resource to our community. Something that we're looking forward to providing next year.
And I believe that partnership and that program in particular were, got recognition yesterday at the Tacoma Foundation Azalea Awards, and Eric was there representing the department, and there were a number of people from the Recreation Committee, and I had the honor of presenting the award.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Got the Tacoma Spirit Award from the Tacoma Foundation. That was real nice.
I heard that Eric was in a tuxedo. Is that true? Just a few other things. I know we talked about website enhancement and the use of technology. It's, these are the, all the departments are talking about this. We're talking about revamping our website. We've gotten a lot of feedback from the community about it being more interactive, having a search function, basic things that, basically right now, we take our brochure and, you know, it's a PDF, and so we're all excited. In fact, we have, Eric and Carrie both have expertise in websites. Gregory does. I'm about to develop some expertise, and so we're very excited about it. And one of the things that I would really like, you may have noticed, I take a lot of the pictures in the guide and the brochure, and really looking forward to having real people represented on our website with activities, and, you know, they're colorful, and it's one of the things we're hoping to do with that. And the use of technology, again, I'm lucky to have people with great skills and interests, and we're always looking to improve. As you know, we have our new software. We've gotten good feedback, for the most part, a few glitches, but that will only get better in the next year, and there are other tools available to us through that that we'll be working on. So that's basically the end of our comments. If you had any questions or areas you'd like to discuss, we're certainly...
Councilmember Siemens, and then Councilmember Clay.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you all for coming here tonight for the very interesting and good report. Really have been pleased to see the changes in the department over the past year. It's been real gratifying to see that many of the things that this council expressed of areas for improvement have been addressed and addressed in a very aggressive and positive way, and we thank you for that.
Thank you.
I thank you for that. Paula, I wanted to especially mention the senior programs because that is an area that has really flourished, and really appreciate the work you do in that area. I know that many of my constituents at the Franklin Apartments are very involved in your programs, and they're always giving me feedback on the different things that you have them doing and the activities, and actually being active. The Bone Builders Class is one example that is really appreciated by the people in the community, so I thank you for that. The, you know, the basketball program, Greg, everybody knows how successful that was, and I think that was an example of where, you know, the council had some concerns last year during the budget process, and, you know, the department really addressed those concerns in a very positive and good-spirited way, and I appreciate that, and I thank you. It was something that was really, went well with the young people, with, you know, 400 and some involved in the program for the first year. It was excellent. And that kind of leads me to the, to the one thing that I would like to see you continue to address in the coming months, and that is making sure that people across the city can be involved in the recreational programs. You know, we, Paula, you talked about maybe holding the advisory committee meetings at the Victory Towers, or whatever it's called nowadays, and the Franklin Apartments, and here at the Community Center, but I know there are seniors in other parts of the city that may find those locations difficult, and it might be appropriate to have, to reach out towards Five and Six, maybe even one, to find the seniors in those areas and help them to become aware of what you have and be involved in making the decisions with the advisory committee. And then, Deborah, you know, it's the same thing with the teens, the other kids. I think we do very well at attracting the young people in the immediate area of the Community Center, and also in the immediate area of the Recreation Center on New Hampshire Avenue. But I am hopeful that you'll be able to reach out to the young people, especially in Councilmember Snipper's ward, where there, and also in some areas of Ward Six that are not reached right now. I think, I think down in the Pine Crest area, Ward Three, there's also, you know, a lot of kids that are not participating in our programs, and personally, my hope was, when we bought the city bus, that there would be some use of that to bring, to provide the transportation, to bring the young people here to the center or to the Recreation Center on New Hampshire Avenue so they could participate in the programs, and I remain hopeful that in the coming year we can make that happen. And just one last thing, and that is that, you know, I was in Ward Five today on some other business, and I was talking with some kids over there, and they had no awareness of the recreational programs here we have at the Community Center, the swimming pool, and the other things, and that, it just is an example of why I think we need to do better, stronger outreach in the areas that are not right around the centers that we have, so that those kids have the advantage that the other kids do. Now, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Clay, and then everybody remind me to check with Councilmember Snipper. Councilmember Clay, and then everybody remind me to check with Councilmember Snipper after Councilmember Clay.
Thanks for coming. I have a full hodgepodge of comments. Let's start with the new teen manager. What's your name?
Fay.
Fay.
Yes.
In my day job, I work for the federal agency that runs the national service programs. And there's new national service legislation that was signed by the President on April 21st. And part of it is that there's going to be some programs for kids to earn ed awards for, for college, with some summer service, mostly high school kids, and also with some semester service. I think it would be really interesting for Tacoma Park to get in on the front end of that. So they're already doing community service hours, because they're in Montgomery County anyway, so when you hook them into the program, they can get some scholarship dollars to go to college, so.
They're efficient.
It's called, well, they have the summer service and semester service, and there's some different, different names for it, but hopefully that's going to be unveiled in this next fiscal year, what that's going to look like. Senior programs, everybody always has nice things to say about senior programs, but my next door neighbor caught me yesterday. It's like, I frequently walk home, so people catch me on the way home, and she said, "How come they don't have rides for seniors who live in single-family homes?" And she said how the last woman used to go and pick people up, and I said, "Well, I don't think we can fairly ask our senior director to go pick people up." But, but we can't ask you to do that. Maybe we could help do a ride coordination thing. I know where my mom lives, she takes like three of her lady friends to the senior center, and so I know that my neighbor attends the, the senior center, and she said that she herself would be willing to go pick people up if there was maybe a coordination mechanism.
I'd like her to use the number.
And, and I actually, I don't hear, I think I would echo what Terry said, I don't hear as much about senior programs in my ward. I hear some about them. I hear a lot about Franklin Apartments and Victory Towers, so maybe some, some outreach to some of the single-family neighborhoods is in order. I know that it comes out, the Silver Foxes piece comes out, I think, in the newsletter occasionally, with some components of it.
Comes out once a month.
Yeah, so, thank you, and, and thank you for everything that you've been doing. Okay. After, the after-school program, I think is, is also getting better. I'd like to suggest a dedicated homework space. I have had a child in aftercare this year, and she's really enjoyed it, particularly the swimming. And it has brought me into the Community Center a lot at the time when the kids are here, and it's, it's really loud. For kids who have any kind of noise sensitivity at all, it's really overwhelming. In the six years that I've had Girl Scouts, I've had Girl Scouts kind of go in and out of the program, and the kids who leave mostly say that it's, it's too loud. So I don't know if there's a way to baffle some of the sound, particularly in the azalea room, to help reduce some of the loudness, but, you know, we could baffle it with artwork. It doesn't have to be big carpeted squares, but if we didn't have anything else in the meantime, we could put up big carpeted squares, or get some canvases, and John McLaren did those Jason, Jackson Pollock, you know, style, whatever. Be great to be able to reduce the noise. It's, I'm only in there for five minutes, and it's overwhelming to me, and I played in a rock band when I was young, so it is really loud. And the other thing I've noted is that the homework space kind of moves around, and so my question is, is there now going to, now that you've combined the bright yellow room and the bright purple room, are, is that going to be a dedicated homework space now? Because one of those rooms was homework space.
What happens is that space is, when it's open, when there aren't classes, like scheduled classes in there, that's when the after-school program actually uses that space, because it is kind of secluded from the azalea room and then the outlined hallways. But when there are classes in there, we stay in the azalea for the afternoon, and the rest of the group is, is either outside, or they go to the gate room.
Okay. I highly encourage you to find a dedicated homework space for folks, and get the tables and chairs out for them every time, buy beanbag chairs if that's what works, but get kids into some comfortable space, because that's another thing for my neighbors who have their kids in aftercare. Now, my kid has been doing her homework all the time, and you have, all have been accommodating of that, and that's great, and, and if she doesn't come home with her homework done, she doesn't get to watch movies on Friday night, so she has a really huge motivation to do that. But a lot of parents said, you know, they would love to have, to see more homework support so that their kids could get their homework done. So, you know, whatever it would take to get some support for that, I think, would be, would be great for those kids who need to get their homework done. You know, I think that's a really just critical part of the aftercare program. I haven't seen very many signs that say there's no swimming today after our last conversation, so are you guys managing to get the kids in the pool every, every week? Are they being able to do that every week now?
With the aftercare program?
Yeah.
Unless there's a staffing issue, then we usually go to the pool.
Okay. Could we have a backup plan? Because I know it's really a drag for the kids when they bring their swimming suit and their towel, and then they find out when they get there that they can't go.
We can work on that.
You could call me at work, I could come and go swimming with the kids, I mean. Okay. What's the rec coordinator position that's been eliminated?
The sports coordinator.
Okay.
It's been vacant, and we are discussing ways to make aspects of it part-time, or we do have another vacancy, you know, Melanie's position at the front desk. So we're looking at ways we might combine duties, or just be more efficient about it, so.
Right. Well, Melanie was certainly a great loss, I was sad to see her go. I've said this before, but I still don't quite understand the staffing configuration of the Recreation Department. It still seems like it's really top-heavy to me, and so to, to lose another, like, I understand what Carrie does, her job makes total sense to me, and I get what she does every day, and I, she's probably the person whose job I'm really most familiar with, and I get the management job. I don't understand why we have three, which is a director and two assistant managers, and I totally understand the senior program coordinator's position, and I kind of have a grip on the, on the, the team coordinator position, but I, I'm not very clear on what the delineation between you three, kind of, you're this, like, there's three senior managers in the Recreation Department, and I, I guess I don't understand that, and I would hate to see, you know, the, the jobs like the sports coordinator and the facilities management person become part of our upper, our, our senior management structure positions also, because I think we could, I would like to see us look for a staffing configuration down the road that isn't as, as top-heavy as it is, and that continues to be a concern to me. So I have three last things. Staff during the basketball season, and at other times, I know, to spend time on their cellphones and on their MP3 players, and I don't know if you have a policy about that or not, but I think, you know, they don't need to be on their cellphones and checking their cellphones all the time. I know that's the kind of world we live in, but I think they need to be really tuned in to the, to the kids all the time. And, you know, not listening to their radios with their earphones in, which is what, I mostly saw that during the, during the basketball program, which went exceedingly well, also, by the way. I tried to use the new sign-up for a class online, and that was, that's great. I love it that you have the new program software in place, and that you executed it, and I haven't seen all the numbers, but I, I know the numbers are, are forthcoming, because I can tell by the structure that you're going to be able to get great data out of it, and that's just terrific, and it just really brings us into the 21st century, so congratulations. That's something that my constituents have been asking me about in the four years that I have been in office, and beating me over the head with a stick with it, and, and in turn, I've been coming and beating you guys around with a stick with it. And it's, it's great that it's here and that it's functional.
We won't miss that, by the way.
Yeah, I won't miss it either. It would be great if you could sign up without having to wait for an email to come back to you to get a registration number to go in, so I don't know if we could make it more immediate, because I had to sign up for an account and then wait to get an email back.
Isn't it instantaneous? It's pretty instantaneous. I mean, sometimes it takes, I mean, the most ever waited, when a mask went off, it's about 15 minutes.
Oh, it's automated? It's not someone on your end?
No.
It's for verification purposes.
It's automated response from actitnet itself.
It's for verification purposes.
Okay. Good. My apologies, I misunderstood how that word.
You have to go through your email.
Right.
To go in and register.
Okay, well, I can, I can hang with that, that's good enough. My last suggestion is about some more fundraising for the pool. There's a lot of people who would like to give some money to the pool, and we don't really have a mechanism. Like, I would have bought a year-long membership, but they don't offer it, and I haven't actually gone, like, everyone in my family has gone swimming at the pool but me, because they have more time than I do. But I've had a lot of people who would like to do something, and, and maybe we could set up a program where someone could pay $100 and donate whatever, how many passes that would be, and, and you could bring in some programs that maybe didn't have the money to do it, because I'm sure there are a lot of people who might consider doing that. I would give $100 for a bunch of pool passes if we had, like, a group of folks then that could, some low-income folks, or maybe you could use it with a teen program or something, so that we were funding it through. People who are never going to swim, but they want to support the, the pool. And right now, the only mechanism for them to provide any, anything to the pool is to buy passes, and so if they're going to buy them, why don't we have them buy them and give them to you, and then you can take some groups that otherwise wouldn't get to go swimming, swimming. And that's the last I have to say. Thank you very much.
Want to give Councilmember Snipper a chance for any questions or comments on this?
Hi, thank you very much. I thought, as several councilmembers have noted, there's been a, a real improvement in the Recreation Department. I think that many of the, as, as Colleen said, many of the things we've been harping on for a while have, you know, come to fruition, and I'm, I'm just delighted to see that. I really do believe that the rec department has, you know, taken our, our comments seriously, and, and that feels good, and, and addressed them. And as moving forward, I think a lot of the changes will bring more people into using the rec, the rec department's programs. I do continue, as Councilmember Siemens said, have a concern about folks in the outline wards like mine, that it's, it's a little hard to get people connected to the programs as well as to get them transported to them, particularly the kids. So I too, like Councilmember Siemens, Councilmember Siemens, hope that the bus can be used at some point, or some other method, for helping to transport people to the program. I do have a specific question about that, which I'll stop now and ask, and then I have a couple of other comments. I wasn't, you may have said it, and I didn't hear, the, the connection is, is pretty good, but it's not perfect, about the change in the bus schedule and route to bring seniors, particularly from Victory Towers area, to the Community Center. I assume that that will mean an upsurge in use, and I was wondering if you've factored that into your budget.
If I understand you correctly, we're talking about a ride-on bus?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and so then I don't understand your question, I'm sorry, that, have we factored the, the savings from that?
No, I'm sorry, let me, let me clarify. I'm, I'm a little fuzzy with some of the mids I'm taking, taking, so it may seem clear to me, but not to you, so let's, let me try again. I'm assuming that the change in the ride-on bus will bring more seniors, or allow more seniors to come to the Community Center, and I'm optimistic that more will, in fact, take advantage of that and come to the Community Center. And so then the question is, does there need to be an adjustment in staffing or other resources to account for an increase? I guess the, the service wouldn't begin until, I think it's July, I don't remember exactly, but we have a little bit of planning time. Is there enough excess capacity in the programs now, that if there were, you know, a 10% or 15% increase in participation, it wouldn't be a problem? I'm just kind of wondering what your thinking is on dealing with the possible increase in participants.
I, I understand, thank you for clarifying. We have a fairly large capacity for our programs, the rooms that we use, the dance room, the senior room. I, I don't think that we're at the risk of overflow. We'd love to have that problem, and it might happen, but I don't, I think it, it may happen over time, but I, I think we're pretty well poised for the next year, anyway. I think what, what we'll see happen as a result is that more seniors will come more frequently, that they'll have an easier time getting here, and so they might drop in for something they didn't before, and, and hopefully we'll reach some new seniors. So it's a great question, but I don't, I don't have a real good answer about how we can project that out.
But basically, but you did, you did actually answer it, because you said that you thought you had some spare capacity now, that if there was a modest increase, it would be no problem in handling it.
That's correct.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's what I was worried, you know, if you had capacity now, then, you know, that might be a concern. The other question I've had, and of course, this has come up before, is the New Hampshire Avenue Rec Center. Do you have a, I know in the materials, you've indicated that, you know, discussions might happen, or I'm not exactly sure, can't, of course, put my finger on it exactly right now where that section is, but I do have a concern about that. We, I'm not sure we get fully reimbursed for the use of that facility, and it is pretty aging, and has some other problems. Could you, could you speak to that issue a little bit?
Councilmember Snipper, I'm probably the best person to address, at least, the financial aspects of that. This was an issue that I raised as part of the Revenue Sharing Task Force, and you are correct that we are not being fully reimbursed for the operational cost of the facility. We are currently receiving $125,000. If you look at your budget documentation, that equates to about half of the operating cost of that division. I have not received a response from the county members of the task force on that specific request. I imagine that will be forthcoming after we all get through with our respective budget processes. In terms of the fate of that facility, we did have some discussions with the county rec department, as well as representatives of Park and Planning during the task force. As you probably recall, the facility is actually owned by Park and Planning. We operated under contract with the Montgomery County Recreation Department. I think there'll be a lot more discussions that will be needed. I think we all agree that the ability to generate revenue from that facility is limited because of its age and its layout. My guess would be that a lot of the resolution of the building will probably come through the sector plan process. Actually, on Friday, I did have a discussion with a representative of Park and Planning about the facility. We have provided, through the Recreation Department, our estimate of what we feel would be a, a good-sized building and the amenities that should be in it to really serve the community. I think, kind of in a perfect world, and that may take a while, what we'd ideally like to see happen is a developer step in, work with Park and Planning, and with the county, and with the city, to redevelop the site where it might provide either some type of retail development, mixed-use development that may include housing, but that would also have a recreation facility constructed as part of the project. So that's what we were, Sarah Daines and I were talking to, excuse me, someone from Park and Planning about that on Friday. I know Park and Planning has had some cursory discussions with some developers about the site.
That's extremely helpful, thank you very much. That does address the concern, because it is a kind of a long-term concern, we're not going to solve this problem, you know, in the next little while. That was very helpful. I continue to be very enthusiastic about the pool. I hear a lot of good things from people about the pool, and I hope that the rec department can continue its marketing and, and similar efforts to get information about the, about the pool. can continue its marketing and similar efforts to get information about the, about the pool out. I think it's a, a pretty good, a pretty good facility, all things considered. Obviously, a big fancy new pool would be even better, but, you know, this thing, this thing is pretty good. I've won it a fair amount, and hoping I can, as part of my rehabilitation, swim in it some more, actually. I have another concern about the fields. I know they're very heavily used, and I wonder if you could talk a little bit about things you're trying to do to balance use and quality of the turf there?
Well, I've tried to, I've tried arm wrestling, but I haven't been very successful with that. There really are a lot of different users, and the seasons, some of the seasons, sport seasons overlap, and there are a lot of children involved in organized sports. So, many of you know, the Piney Branch Park is going to be renovated in the next year and a half, and so that field will be out of commission for a while, so we've alerted the users that, that they'll have to perhaps go to Park and Planning or the county to find an alternative site. We are looking at working with Public Works to rehabilitate Jackie Park somewhat. That field is, is marginally usable, and we're looking to make it a more playable park for youth sports, with the hope of maybe doing some kind of rotation throughout the year, so that we can rest a field, perhaps not the whole year, but some part of the year. We have a fairly aggressive maintenance program, which we've had great results from in the last two years with seeding and lime and aeration. So, I feel like we're coming along with that. Of course, as, you know, the county has the same issue. They, their fields are overused, and there's a great demand from the adult population, particularly in the county. And we get calls all the time from adults looking for a place to play something, and of course, we tell them our priority is youth, and so, by, at the end of the day, they're really, you know, you might be able to take your kid down to the park and hit some balls to them, but it's pretty much used most of the time.
Thank you. That was, that was helpful. I realize that it is, in fact, a balancing act, and I appreciate the efforts to work with Public Works to see if that, that might help a little bit. I mean, we're really talking about just, you know, marginal improvements around the edges, because, as you say, that things are so heavily used, it's, you can't let them lie fallow for a month during the summer.
Right.
It just wouldn't work. I'm really happy with the proposed website stuff and the increased use of technology. I think that will, I think that's really a good direction to go in. Young people these days are so tech-savvy, it's amazing. And I think there are some, as you get, get some experience with it and get some feedback from the public, you'll evolve some, some use of the existing technologies in new ways, and we'll be happy to hear about that, too. And that concludes my comments. Thanks.
Thank you.
And if I can just piggyback on one of Councilmember Snipper's comments about the New Hampshire Avenue Recreation Center. As I read through the materials tonight and read the section on that in the special consideration of the cover sheet, I have to admit that my first reaction in seeing the difficulties of dealing with that building and it being difficult to program because of the, of the facility itself, and I guess I don't have a clear picture of how that gets used, and I saw in the material here that most of it was classified in, as internal city use, but my sense was that we use a lot of contractors to run classes there. And I have to say frankly, what I wrote down as I read that section was, gee, should we shut that facility down? And so, I'd love you to take a minute or two to tell me, kind of, why, how it's working, given the difficulties that we have with that, and how it's being programmed. I would hate to kind of say, oh, just, you know, take away a facility that's serving a population that we really need to serve. My sense from previous discussions about that was that there were a lot of people from outside the city who were using that facility. So, if you can just address that a little bit to help me understand that.
Yes, I'll address it. Well, first, the center is used primarily by about, in my estimation, about 70% young people. Most of the young people live right there in the immediate area, but because of the complexity of the ownership of the building and us leasing the building, we cannot have non-resident fees. So, all of the fees are the same across the board, so it costs the same for a Prince George's County resident to use the facility, as a Washington DC resident, as a City of Tacoma Park resident, as someone that lives in Montgomery County.
And that's driven by Park and Planning?
The contract with-
With Montgomery County.
Right. That's been true since the beginning of the contract.
Right. So, we do see a lot of use from other jurisdictions, young people, as well as adults. In that facility, we have a very vibrant dance program that takes place from 9:00 AM on Saturdays till 5:00 PM. We have a vibrant ladies boot camp class, which right now has about 20 young ladies involved in it, which is very good. We have a Russian martial arts program. We have a jazzercise program that has been there for some years, that has, on average, about 15 to 17 young ladies three days a week participating in that. Anytime we hold a basketball skills class, you know, we usually get 10 to 12 to 15 kids that participate. We have an active Kid City after-school program, which focuses on homework help for the kids, which I really think is a benefit to the kids that live in that community. Parents really take advantage of that. We have a recess, a reduced recess camp there in the summertime for the young people, which I believe is, again, is a true benefit to the young kids, as well as the families that live in that community.
Okay, so, in spite of the difficulties of the condition of the facility and the design of the facility-
Yes.
-it's, and the fact that we're not getting, from our point of view, properly compensated by the county for running that facility for them, that we're, we're serving our target populations and serving as best we can a number of our residents, given the agreement that we have to operate under?
Yes.
I would agree with that. The one comment I would make is, in years past, we've been more heavily using the facility, renting it out, renting the gym, and my feeling was that, that we weren't serving the community as much. By the fact that Gregory's staff has done more programming, that really, there are a lot more local people participating in actual programs. So, our rental revenues are down, but that's because the kids and the local people are using the facility more.
Okay, that's helpful to know, because I didn't particularly like feeling like, I should say, close it down, but I kind of was going there based on what I knew, but it's helpful to get that additional information. And if I can just add one more comment to that, and then that takes care of my comments, that I appreciate the information that you've provided us about the other jurisdictions and registration fees, and the sense that I think we're going to need to revisit and make sure that we're comfortable with our registration fees and our use and rental policy for facilities, given the changes that we can anticipate coming in the use of this room. So, I think that in the next, over the next hour-long period of time, number of months, that as we get to that and the council discusses that, that it'll be very helpful to have all the information you've provided and kind of revisit that, turn the page to that.
I'd like to make one more comment, something that Councilmember Clay mentioned about the noise level in the azalea room. And I don't want to leave out Eric here. He has a lot of ideas and plans for this building, for improving. Eric, I don't know if you wanted to speak about your ideas for the aesthetics and the different feedback you're getting from people, and your ideas for art and things like that.
Sure, I can. It is, it's good seeing everybody again, because I sit in here quite a bit on Monday nights, but now I'm in front of you speaking. So, I'd say I do have a lot of plans for the building. One of the plans is to make it very aesthetically pleasing to people that come into the facility. I've noticed that there are some things already that have been done, like the landscaping outside was here before I came aboard, but there's little minor things, like the flyers that are all over the counters. I'm planning on buying a flyer board, so we can, we can have that display, everything. Also, that we went to a no-tape policy on the doors, where we're putting things behind glass. A lot of this really has to do with leadership and getting my staff on board. We've had a number of meetings with the staff to make them aware of the ideas that I have, and just to speak on Councilman Clay's insight earlier with the MP3 players and cell phones. When I came here, we had a policy and procedures in place, and then we made sure to revisit that and make some changes that needed, and have more of a staff training, make sure everybody goes through our expectations for the department. And one of those is exactly what you pointed out with cell phones and MP3 players. But it's those little things that, that you notice and the public notices, that I've noticed as well, that we're trying to make sure we're all on board and have more of a polished, professional look for the department. With that being said, I do want to add some plans to the facility. Art is a big idea, too, which we are lucky to have quite a few artists displaying every month, and that I haven't had to worry about with that changing. But just the looks of the community center, making it more inviting, warm, is something that I'm trying to make sure that the staff is aware of. That also goes to the way that they present themselves, staff, uniforms and so forth, making sure that they wear those, getting out from behind the desk, talking to the citizens and so forth. It's more of an idea of service, which really recreation is all about, and making sure that everybody's on board with that.
Thank you, Eric.
Councilmembers Barry and Robinson haven't had a chance, and we're, we're coming up on an hour on this, so-
Right, and I'll be discreet. I want to say, congratulations for a very successful year. Good job, and look forward to a repeat this year. I would certainly oppose any effort to shut down the New Hampshire Avenue Rec. facility. I think, if anything, we need to redouble our efforts to reach that population, and the population includes kids who have lived pretty tough lives in a hardscrabble area, and I really like the idea for, for the emphasis on dealing with the whole individual, not just the physical aspect, but helping with the homework, because these kids, you know, are, some of them academically challenged, at risk generally, in an area that has had a lot of gang activity over the years, and that coming from the Prince George's side, as well as in our own community. So, I have no problem with serving folks from outside, because it's all part of the same melting pot. And I do remember a few years ago, when we had a forum here on gang prevention, Barb may remember, and some of the others. What struck me is the former gang member turned social worker, working with gang members to try to get them out of the gangs, was a comment he made, saying that it's a lot cheaper to give a kid a basketball than it is to pay to have them incarcerated over the years. So, it's absolutely crucial that we continue the effort in that area, because it's an extremely sensitive place with a lot of potential, but at the same time, a lot of kids who've had a rough life and need the kind of activity that we give them. The other point is, we've had some successful programs this year, and it seems like we've brought in a lot of new, young people to the program. And I wonder if we know anything about whether they are in fact new, or just kids that we continue to recycle through programs that we've offered in the past? And if they are new, what are we doing to make sure that we're keeping that customer and making certain that they're aware of the array of other programs we have, and that hopefully they'll sign up for them, too, and bring their friends along, and we'll continue to grow the program? Do you have a sense of who?
I have a little bit of a sense, and again, with the new software, we'll, we do ask that question, too, if this is your first one, but of course, now we can tell if someone has participated before. We are doing a little more outreach to the youth, and part of the social networking that we're starting to talk about. With our software, there is an email texting capability, and we're, right now, launching an effort to get as many kids as we can to register. Now, that's, you know, it's a $5 registration, but this is where we get their parents' information and their email address and things like that. So, it's important for us to have the kids come through us, and so, I foresee in the next year, a lot more target marketing to those kids.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you all for being here. I agree with my colleagues, it's sounding good, things are looking good. Tonight, I'm going to put the numbers guy hat on and ask you about some numbers. If you knock out the amount that comes back to the Tacoma Park, the, route of the Rec. Center over on New Hampshire Avenue, it looks to me like about 18.7% of the rec. department's budget comes from fees and permits and so forth. Okay? If you knock, if you take 125 off of the 392, that equates to about 19, a little under 19%, that's coming back in the, as far as fees and so forth, which seems good. I don't know how that compares to other recreation departments elsewhere. And so, one question I have is, do you have a plan, you have a plan, internal plan, to boost that, and what's the nature of it? And I don't need you to go into big details right now, but I'm curious about that. And I'm just going to lay out several things, and then you can mull it over and either respond now or think about it. And so, and I have another question about the software that you're currently using, which seems to produce good results and reports for you, and I'm wondering how that will increase the efficiencies that you see in the programs that you do deliver, and how that will translate to people getting better service and, and bringing in more fees. I'm thinking about, and it's not that I want you to pay for the entire rec. department out of fees and so forth, but I'm just curious about how, what trend you see, again, how, what's your, what trajectory you see in all of this, thinking ahead. As I look to the rec. department summary in the big book, in the binder book, I note that the estimated FY09 numbers are, in many cases, significantly lower than the adopted FY09 numbers. And that's not, not, you're not alone in coming in under budget in our departments, and your efforts there are really good. I mean, very much appreciated there. You come in, or at least you estimate that you'll come in below what last year's budget was. But in some cases, the proposed budget for next year is significantly more than the adopted budget from last year, and causes me some concern. For example, and then this one, I don't, maybe you can clarify this one, the Tacoma Park Rec. Center has the, the proposed FY10 budget is 43% more than the estimated FY09, and 20% more than the adopted FY09. So, I'm curious about- So I'm curious about how that number went up somewhere between 20% from adopted last year to 43% estimated this year. Here's another example. The wages from proposed FY10 to estimated FY09 went up 23%. Your estimates are 23%. Or if you go adopted to proposed, it's 11%. So those wages seem significant to me. The fringes, even more dramatic, 55% above estimated, but as opposed to 4% from adopted to proposed in FY10. And these, again, I'm throwing out a lot of numbers here, I didn't expect an immediate response. But I'm trying to, I'm trying to get a grip on why the department's overall expenditure is 7.6% higher. We're all feeling the pressure from our constituents on kind of holding the line, so I'm kind of, I'm trying to look at how we can get a grip on that. And the final number I see here is what's coming out of the general fund. And I didn't do the math here. But estimated FY09 is 767, 767,000 from our general fund, and the proposed is 1,005,000. So that's a significant increase as well. So there, I spit out a whole lot of numbers. I'm looking for some general feedback on what your Plan B is. If you can't get the 7.6%, here's my final, final thing. What if, what if terrible, we actually reduce the amount we were going to budget for this year, and you had to live with something that wasn't a 7.6% increase, but something less than that, either flat or who knows what?
How about yes, yes, no, and maybe?
There you go. Thank you very much.
Well, that is a lot. I'm not, I don't have the calculator, so I'm going with your percentages. A couple of things Barb Matthews is going to address, I think. Our plans to increase revenue, I think we're starting that conversation with the fees for the buildings that I've attached. I think that's a good way for us to increase revenue. We've, in fact, the attachment, we've identified a few ways that we might be able to increase revenue, including charging field usage fees for sports leagues. And I think the best way that we can increase our revenue is to increase our participation. And so we're, we have an effort, we launched an effort to maximize participation in our programs. And I do think that ties in to your second question about the efficiency of the software that, I know that Carrie has emailed participants in a class to say, you know, it's time to sign up for the next round of classes. And we were able to find people with similar, with interest in similar programs. So there'll be more marketing. And I do think that that's going to really impact our revenues. Let me see. Barb, you want to address the 7%?
Sure. I think if you, if council looks at the page that Councilmember Robinson was referring to, which is the department summary, most of the variance that he noted happens in personnel costs. I think if you looked at the adopted FY09 budget compared to the estimated FY09, that's simply a reflection of turnover that has occurred during this fiscal year. Council may recall that Eric's position was actually put on hold for a period of time. They didn't get the green light to even start recruiting until right around the first of August. And a position of this nature, I mean, any position can take several months to fill. In Eric's case, he was relocating from another part of the country, so he didn't start until January. So essentially, there was that vacancy, that was for a good chunk of the fiscal year. I think there's been a vacancy at the New Hampshire Avenue Rec Center for a period of time. And one of the things I would note is the council, I think a month or so ago, had the results of the classification and compensation study presented by the consultant. And as the consultant noted, there were certain classes of positions that we found to be way below market, and quite candidly, some of the positions in the Rec Department were among those that were found to be the lowest. It wasn't across the board, but there were certain positions. So what you're in part seeing, I guess from adopted budget to proposed budget, is the reflection of the implementation of the study results. Certainly, Rec is not the only department, but you will see that in other budgets as well. Does that help?
Okay.
And in terms, that's just the wage line item. In terms of fringe benefits, I think as the council's aware, we budgeted for an 11% increase in health insurance. Regrettably, that has come in higher than that, so we're kind of working with our broker. But in the fringe benefit line, most of what you're seeing has to do with health insurance.
Okay. Plan B? I'm not asking for it, but I'm saying, if, do you, do you have an internal sense of what would happen if you had to hold expenses flat?
Well, there's an exercise, since most of the expenses are related to salaries, I don't, I don't have a plan. The only, you know, Barb, what's the percentage of the budget that salaries, is it?
Of yours?
Yes.
77%.
Okay. So if we were to cut any programs, it would, it would really be a minimal impact on our, on our budget. So you're really looking at positions.
Okay.
And no, we don't have a plan to cut positions, other than the downsizing of that one position, which was, we did in anticipation of the growing costs.
Okay, thank you.
So I know why Plan B has already been implemented. Councilmember Wright?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple questions. First is in the area of data, so I'm curious about your, I'm happy that you're starting to gather the information, but had some more specific questions. Maybe some of it's, you know, it'll come in the future, but I will be curious about when. So one question is, if people don't sign up online, are you still capturing when someone comes in and pays with a check?
Yes.
Is the staff person, so that all gets captured? So when will we start to be able to see an analysis, a program-by-program analysis of attendance, costs, that sort of stuff?
Well, we, like I mentioned earlier, we only have three months of data. And what we're trying to do, if you add into the mix the fact that our summer programs, really that, those registrations haven't really started to come in yet, we were hoping to get a complete year of data. I mean, it's easy for us to produce numbers for you of who's participated in the last three months. From June to December, all of that information is in the old system. So we have to extract that data. If we're going to get a full year, I would say we could wait until the end of June with the new system, then we'd have a full year.
I would suggest maybe showing us the data and what it's going to look like would be helpful, because, for example, the usage data we show, are shown here, I find interesting. But the thing that seems to be missing to me is a utilization number, right? So you're breaking down the percentages of all the programs and things and how the space was used, but there's no factor in there of how much time was space unused, right? We have this facility, unless I don't understand the numbers in the facility usage chart, not every room is rented every single hour or used every single hour. So I think one of the big questions people have is usage of facility. And so to me, that's a utilization number. And so, for example, of the hours that this facility is open, a percentage of when it's not used, actually, either by programs, rental, or free usage hours, I guess. I assume that free usage hours doesn't mean that it's not being used, right? That means we're giving it to someone for no charge.
That's correct. It's being used, but there's no rental income.
So this is just a percentage of the hours that the facilities were used and how that breaks down as opposed to a utilization number? Because it might look really good that Hefner Park Community Center, for example, is, this is how the breakdown is, but if that's actually only 20% of the time that the facility could be being used, that's not so great in terms of our objective of utilizing the facilities. Does that make sense?
Right, and I think that this is probably the first, our first opportunity to capture that data now. And so what I would like to do is, is go for six months at least with this system and get sort of a baseline so that we can, we can do the negative of the, of the percentage not used. I don't know, I guess it would be helpful for us to know what the standard is, because I'm sure that most facilities aren't used 50% of the time. But, but we can try to do some benchmarking on that.
Right. My only point, I think, is that I think it's helpful to show the data to us earlier on, or how you're going to present the data to us earlier on, because then we can tell you, oh, this is helpful in us understanding how the department's running and how it's being managed. And we might have input into how that data is represented. Like, I'm sure you could have printed out, or I would hope you could have shown that utilization percentage for the three months that you have. You chose not to, so I'm saying, for example, that would be a good thing to have, to see. And so I think the same thing is true of the individual program data. I think it would be helpful to, for us to see what you plan to look at or show us in the future based, granted, it's only three months, but I'd rather do that than get to a whole year, look at the data and say, well, this isn't really that helpful to me. Does that make sense to you?
I understand what you're saying.
Okay. Does that seem like it's something that's doable, or does that make?
We, yeah, we can do that.
Do we have any high-level data numbers on, for example, the total number of program hours we provided or number of participants? So we could, similar to what we did with the library, you can look and see pretty quickly, okay, it's costing us $50 per, I think the number was $50 per resident who utilizes the library per year. So I'm curious, because I think that's a big affordability factor for us. If it ends up being, you know, $600 we're spending per participant per year, is that, you know, do we feel like the money's well spent or not? So those kind of high-level numbers would be helpful. I, in particular, like to see both the cost per participant and the cost per programming hour.
So when you say programming, you're talking about people who've actually paid to use the service? Or people who participate in a special event?
I'm talking at a very, very high level. We run programs that people pay for and they don't pay for. And curious as to how much we're spending in aggregate per programming hour. Obviously, then, when you get individual programs, you break that down per program, right? And we'd be able to evaluate are some programs more cost-effective than others. But I'm just wondering at a very high level, how much we're paying per programming hour? And basically, it just means taking the close to $1 million that is going from the general fund, really, and looking at how many programming hours we have and dividing that general fund number by the programming hours. Another item just related to the software, I'm curious if we're selling our list to anybody or the company is selling our list?
No, we don't do that.
To sign an agreement initially.
Maybe it's coincidence, but I signed up to rent the Hefner Community Center. And I started getting these emails about area activities, like I was an event planner or something like that, and it was referencing the Hefner Community Center. So my only conclusion was that somehow, somewhere the, either the company we're using or someone was selling this, I think we should double check on that one.
I signed up, so I got this.
Oh, maybe it's, has something to do with Tacoma Park?
I get like 10 a day.
Oh, I unsubscribed, so maybe it's unrelated. It could be unrelated.
On my city.
Yeah. This is, I guess, a question for the city manager. We talked about getting us org charts, because I think there were a couple of different questions up here about who does what, what's the structure of the, and so I know you, we talked about getting that, but maybe I, it was in my box and I missed it.
No, we finished most of those. What we were trying to do, Councilmember Wright, is to take the org charts that were in the published budget document for FY09 and transfer the FTEs to that.
Yeah.
Peggy Washington made it through most of them. I hope to get those to you tomorrow. I can just basically put it in a PDF and send it to the council tomorrow.
Okay. The, do we have any programs where during the summer, because our pool here will be closed during the summer, I just learned that recently, I was surprised, didn't know that, sad, but I understand. Do we do anything to actively recruit people or figure out a way to take advantage of the Long Branch Pool, the outdoor pool, that's a county facility, actually?
Our summer camp uses it every week. Beyond that, we don't, you mean, do we market the pool?
Do we, is it, are people made aware of it in our brochure we put out, or do we?
Not in our brochure, it's in the city's survival guide. The various facilities are listed there, but we don't typically market the various county facilities. We have limited space in our guide, and actually, the space was made available for the Piney Branch Pool at the direction of the council to provide that marketing service, which we were happy to do.
Okay. What percentage of the Rec staff are Spanish-speaking?
Percentage? No, another percentage.
Do we, do we have any Rec staff that are Spanish-speaking?
We do. Carrie, you've got it.
Well, just, you don't have to give me a percentage, just. Well, maybe we could, we could think about as we.
Maybe five Spanish-speaking. We have a French speaker and.
And then I think to the sort of Plan B option, so we don't have someone who's running the Tacoma, the Rec Facility over on New Hampshire Avenue right now?
Right.
Is that right? Did that person resign or left or whatever, we haven't filled the position?
Correct.
What about if we just didn't replace the position and we continued to do what we've been doing now to run the facility and meet the needs of?
Well, it has obvious implications for the facility. We've been stretching our staff a little thin up there. It's basically part-time folks, and Gregory supervises that facility.
I noticed, Greg, you had a smile. Does that mean you don't get to see your children or something?
Something like that.
Okay. I don't have any other questions.
Councilmember Seaman said one final comment. Yes, I just wanted to find a comment. I want to thank you, Deborah, for your enthusiastic support of the Piney Branch Pool and your assistance to the Adonis Community Services in making that a success. I think the pool has opened in February and has grown in participation in the community very well, and I think you deserve a good deal of the credit for that. And I look forward to a flourishing year next year with the pool so that the county will have no problem giving us funds for the remaining. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you all very much. We'll take a short five-minute break and then get to the police budget and then some beginning reconciliation discussion.
Well, we're, we want you to have as much time as possible to question us so that we get everything on the table here tonight. How's that?
Councilmember Barry says questions and presentations from this table.
So I'll let my staff just introduce them, what they run.
Lieutenant Rick Bowes, I run the patrol division of the department.
Denise Collet, I do run the administrative services division.
I'm Ed Corsi, I'm the second commander of the department.
I'm Richard Sibley, I run the promotional services.
Welcome, everybody.
Thank you.
And thank you for hanging in there.
It's no problem. Our budget this year. It's no problem. Our budget this year is basically the same as last year. The increased costs, as you see, is in the personnel area based on the negotiated contracts, which goes all the way up and affects, obviously, the benefit package also. We had two new contracts that basically fall into there. There are no added positions. The only thing that we did is the evidence manager is now full-time at 32 hours, and we have carried him at 32 hours with permission from the city manager for the last year to keep up with the amount of evidence we're taking in as a result of more arrests and the cases we're doing. And we obviously still are cleaning up from the past and I think from the audit report that you got this year where everything's going fine in that area, which I know was a concern of Councilman Siemens when I first got here. We believe in our budget. When the strategic plan came out, we believed that we were doing most of the things that you were looking for. And I think if you read the cover sheet and the stuff that came with it tonight, you'll see that I think we're on schedule to continue to do that and to meet the goals and objectives of the council in the strategic plan. We believe we can operate with the same budget because we've been fully staffed for two years this next month in May. We have a more experienced department. The detectives are fully staffed. Our plainclothes unit's fully staffed, patrol's fully staffed. We have now a well-trained bicycle squad out on the street. Our officers have basically bought into what we expect. As you know, when we presented the annual report to you, crime was down 11% last year. We're coming to the end of the first quarter and we'll be putting a report out. Knock on wood, it's almost scary. The crime seems to be basically down. There has been a few crimes, but the numbers are down. The biggest crime right now that we've had in the first four months, which I know you're all familiar with, has been vandalism. But the serious Part I crimes have continued to go down, and we like to take credit for that and the fact that we are fully staffed and the officers are doing a better job of patrolling. They've now been in the beats for a longer period of time and the experience starts to pay off. You get a more experienced force, he'd do a better job, and I think that's paying off for us right now. We are only adding one program this year to the department, and it doesn't cost us any money. We use what we basically have now. It's a comstat program. I don't know whether the council's familiar with it. It's a program that started in New York City by Commissioner Brat, who's now the commissioner in Los Angeles, and it's spread throughout the country. The state crime office this year has emphasized comstat with all the departments in the state. Most departments are now implementing it, even the smaller departments. We used it for the first time last month at our staff meeting. It was very successful. It basically, it's a program that controlling serious crime, we're better able to solve other community problems. And what we do is we review crime data each month. We look at the different crimes and trends throughout the city, and we go over it with staff. And to give you an idea of what we did, last month, we had several charts up. We go through it with our crime analysts, and then we talk to staff. Lieutenant Cipley in CID, Lieutenant Bowers in patrol. What are you doing in these different problem areas? And like last month, we looked at the vandalisms that were occurring in certain parts of the city. Comstat program, you better manage your resources. You look at crime trends, but it's the ownership of the department. It's the sergeants, the lieutenants, the officers taking ownership of what's going on in our city, how we can better manage the crime problem. It's my goal, it's been done one or two places in the country to have a community comstat, and we'll probably, if everything, we're going to do another comstat program tomorrow in our staff meeting, is to bring it to the community in this room or another room here in the building where we'll invite the community in to go over once a month what's happening in the community, show them these charts, crime, and explain to them what we're doing with staff. So that's one of my goals that we probably will, if everything goes right, I'd like to probably do it in June and take it through the summer, and it'll be a monthly thing we'll do here in the department. But I think it'll be good for our community who takes, obviously, a very active interest in what occurs. So our comstat program will be the one new program this year. We think we have in place good programs. We want to build upon those programs to better serve our community. I think if you look through everything that we mentioned before about the strategic plan, partnering with the community, keeping our community better informed, we will continue to do those things and build upon them, which has been successful so far. That's basically my presentation, and we're open for questions. I think things are working right, and when things are working right, you continue to work, to build upon that, and when there's things wrong, you try to change them and improve them. And right now, I think we're building a good program here with this staff, which, and the officers, the men and women who've responded to what we've asked them to do. So with that, I'll open it up for questions.
My first question is, can you give us an update on any additional information on the speed cameras?
We're going to do that Thursday night?
Okay.
Thursday night, that's a separate issue we'll talk about. Have you got any questions? If you can, let Barb know so we can be prepared to answer them. That would help.
I mostly just wanted to, I know what I heard things started out as, and I'm wondering whether they're continuing that way, changing, you know, kind of a sense of how things are going. I get anecdotal evidence from people who go by on the street, and, you know, I have a sense of which camera is getting triggered a lot more than the other camera and those kinds of things.
I will just say the cameras are working rather well.
Questions, comments? Councilmember Clyde?
I paid a speeding camera ticket this week. I checked carefully to see if I could possibly have been the one in the car, and it was not me. It's my car, so I paid it happily. So thank you all for everything that you do. And the one question I have is, I think last time we talked, I asked about a volunteers and police program or some other kind of a program to engage the community, and you've talked about a couple things. Are you still thinking about the volunteers and police, or...
One of Denise Pullet's goals and objectives this year is to establish a volunteers and policing program. It was her goal I gave her in January. So that's one of our goals and objectives for this year.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Barry?
Yes, gentlemen and ladies, things are going well. So the question, or the comment and the question that I would have is not going to strike you as earthshaking, but as you may know, I've been concerned for a long time, in fact, the entire time I've been on the council, with the physical appearance of the city, particularly my part of it, and the, I guess, established connection between the physical condition and crime. What I would like to ask is, and this is not part of the glamorous aspect of police work, if there is glamorous, but it's, you know, the mundane kind of things like reporting street-like outages and staying on top of abandoned vehicles. And today, for example, I saw a shopping cart that had been rolled down Holton Avenue and was sort of forlornly, you know, hung up on the curb, between the curb and the street. And the extent to which there is the cooperation between all of the city departments in, when you, when something is seen that can contribute to the degradation of the, of the community, the physical degradation of it, do you feel that this is something that the police do and can contribute to? Or are there possibly still, you know, some holes in the way the different divisions of the city communicate with each other to try to deal with some of these things in the early stages before they become sort of serious and make the place look shabby and therefore act as a kind of beacon to the criminal element to come in and do bad things?
Well, as you all know, we hired a new code enforcement officer this year. Within the first week, Lieutenant Bowers and I met with Sarah, the new code enforcement officer to extend a hand, and we want to work with them. I know a lot of issues go into areas where they may not want to go, and that we want them to contact us. We want to work with them. If he has issues, to let us know. We emphasize, a lot of times on abandoned cars, we don't know they're abandoned sometimes unless some of them stand out. If you live in front of one, you know it's abandoned. We emphasize to our residents the police calls when they see something like that. And that's obviously one of the things I've emphasized since day one. The more residents call us with certain complaints. You talk about streetlights. We're all looking out. We have a detail tonight to look at streetlights, and we periodically on the midnight shift ask them to check streetlights in certain areas to make sure we are keeping up. I think the officers now, the ones that are becoming more experienced, being assigned the same beat, are taking ownership of that beat, and they see conditions. In your ward especially, we've worked hard to clean up the shopping centers, and I think we've done a pretty good job. We've made a multitude of arrests. As you well know, one shopping center is headed in some direction. We're not sure what it is yet, but there aren't a lot of empty stores there now, and we're keeping an eye on that. With the warm weather, we obviously expect alcohol to be a problem again. The county's alcohol unit's been really good at night, working with us when we run into a lot of the continuing alcohol problems down there, and they've been helping people. So we are partnering, and I think we are, when you get the full staff and you can continue to leave people in the same places, they take ownership, and they tend to deal with the problems better than we were probably two, two and a half, three years ago. And I think we are doing a better job, and we're going to continue to emphasize that one of the areas we haven't been able to go to, but we plan on, at least I have it in my master plan, to have the beat officers get together about once every two months to talk about continuing problems. Because we were going through such a change, we didn't have that continuity that we now have. So that's another thing we'll be doing to try to meet that issue.
And the littering, too. Do you, is there a, is there something in our code that allows you to cite litters and have any tickets? I know it's very hard to find people who throw stuff out the window and see them at the moment.
We generally get them when they throw it out of a car, stupid enough to do it in front of us, and that is a very serious fine in the state of Maryland when you get a ticket for that. If we get complaints of dumping or something like that, we do follow them up because people tend to dump stuff and don't realize they left their mail in it with their names and things. It's amazing what you find when people dump stuff. So, yeah, we do look at that and we look for it. It's not one of the easier ones to do, but when we do get them, we definitely charge them.
Great. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Robinson?
Ready for the numbers, guys? In looking at the police page in our, in our budget, and again, this is uninformed, uninformed council member speaking, but the operations has gone up either 10% or 30, 10% looks like, 10% from adopted FY09 to proposed FY10. 10% up in operations. The fringe benefits looks like it's gone up somewhere between 17 and 22% in one year. The hit on our general fund has gone up somewhere between 14 and 32%, depending on whether we're looking at the estimated or the adopted in one year. So these are far larger numbers than the 6.6%. The only place I can see that balances that is that we got an extra $150, it looks like $150,000 in the police rebate, so that's good news. The miscellaneous at the bottom of the left-hand column seems to have gone down 90,000 or about 20%. So that's in supplies, services, charges, and miscellaneous. Those expenses seem to have gone down about 20%. I don't know how you kind of account for that. And then your own office chief seems to have gone down 16% or $108,000.
Safe Tacoma.
Safe Tacoma. And so those, if you throw those together, that's where the six, I'm sure there's, you know, roughly speaking, that's where the 6.6 increase comes. But my concern is that these, the fringes, somewhere between 17 and 22%, that's huge to me.
Well, as I mentioned before, I think you were here at the beginning, that the, we have a new contract with the FOP, with the union, and it's, obviously, we negotiated across-the-board stuff that would raise it. We're at full staff in the patrol division. That raises it. You have the compensation study, which will raise somewhat also. So I think all those play into it. We haven't added any positions.
Right. Well, I just, I guess...
Yeah, I think I can help. Besides, I think the issues that the chief is raising, which are kind of customary, market adjustments in salaries, the biggest thing that you're seeing in the police department, Councilmember Robinson, which would show up in front of you, is the impact of disabilities on the police retirement plan. As you may recall, we budgeted 31% in FY09 in an attempt to try to bring the funding level of the plan up, but because of the high rate of disability in the FY2010 budget, that rate is 34.7%. And obviously, when you have a department that's 94% salaries and you're basically budgeting 3.7% more on all of that for retirement benefits, it has a tremendous effect.
It's a quarter of a million dollars.
Correct. It's not insignificant at all.
It's huge.
Yeah, exactly.
It's huge. Well, we knew this was coming, and it's hit us, but consider at least my position of holding on, you know, our property taxes going up, and my constituents are saying, wait, wait, wait. So keep it in mind that the, the general fund can't live on a 14, 20, 32% increase every year forever, or we'll all sink. So I'm just, and I don't, tonight's my Plan B question. Plan B, how would it, how would you handle it if we didn't go up 6.6%? Do you have a Plan B? It sounds like that would be tough because of the negotiated settlements on the salaries.
I have a Plan B, and it would be reduced in personnel. I wouldn't want to go into specifics because it affects people in the department till I have a chance.
Sure.
But I have a plan, which I discussed with the manager, if I'm told to reduce the budget, and I would be out personnel. I'd have to reduce personnel to reduce my budget.
Okay. Thank you.
If I could also point out that you selected the operations division as an example. It contains half the department's department personnel, so if there's a personnel increase, it looks much larger in that division than in the other section.
Okay, thank you.
Another thing, Councilmember Robinson, off this note, you were looking at the source of funds chart. If you look at summonses and fines, and it looks like it's a decrease from adopted FY09 to a proposed FY10.
Yes.
If you may recall, when we kind of did the general overview, initially when the FY09 budget was prepared, the thought was to try to capture speed camera revenues in the general fund. So we actually bumped up summonses and fines in anticipation of some speed camera revenues going there. In lieu of that, we ended up creating a separate fund. So there's a little bit of that, too.
And while I'm thinking of it, I want to check and see if Councilmember Snipper has any questions. I don't want to lose track of you.
Thank you, Bruce. The procedure's working reasonably well. Bruce, you're doing a good job of remembering to ask. I have a couple of things. One, I, like others, have been very pleased with the police department. I think we're really, the chief is really on his stride here, and it's, it's really nice to see. You know, when I talk to the officers, morale seems really pretty good, and things seem to be going pretty well. Of course, if crime continues to be flat or go down, that's, that's a great thing, too. I have a couple of sort of question-y type things. One is the approximately 94% of departmental expenditures that are personnel-related, does that include, are you accounting for equipment replacement and purchase? Does that include the police car replacement?
Councilmember, this is far, no, it does not. What's going to be captured in personnel costs are going to be wages, any kind of fringe benefits, clothing allowances over time, things of that nature. The replacement of cars would be captured in the capital improvement program.
So that's separate from the, I'll call it the 100% part of which the 90% is figured?
That's correct.
Ah, okay. So departmental expenditures are probably larger than the base that you're using for the 94, to get the 94% number?
That would be correct. As you might recall, maybe you don't, because I think this is right after you've been involved in your accident, one of the things we talked about during the public works budget is perhaps before the budget is finalized, is at least taking the fuel cost for the police department vehicles and maintenance costs and actually moving those in public works to the police department budget.
Ah, yes, that addresses my concern. The second one is, I see that accreditation, you're thinking about pursuing accreditation. Could you talk a little bit about sort of the cost and savings of doing that? I mean, we will have some savings for liability, insurance. There'll be some costs in getting the, getting and keeping the accreditation. Could you chat just a little bit about that?
Accreditation obviously will give us savings in the liability. When we lost accreditation, we learned we lost some money from legit as a result of that. And getting it back and having the accreditation process keeps us up to date on our directives and orders. Everything's brought up to date. We're filing the standards that all police departments in the country are now following. They're in the Kalia program. It makes us a better department, puts us better to defend our position if we got sued. The best part I like about it is that we're looking at all our directives and staying up to date on them, making sure that when there's changes in the law, that our directives are changed. And it's a good program. It makes you standardize everything, and we obviously wish we could have a full-time person, but but we have decided we'll go at the right of 20 hours a week with our person and it's going to take us about a year longer to get accredited than we had planned on. We'd hope to do it in the middle of this year, it'll be 2010, but we will get accredited. And I think it's good for the community. The feedback, I think the community liked it when we were accredited and I think we're heading in the right direction. And as a chief, it's a, it's a good watch-all for me and our staff to make sure we're keeping things up to date and following everything.
Thank you for that information. I'm a supporter of accreditation. I was just more interested in the sort of relative costs and savings. Are you going to have a 20-hour-per-week person? So that's a cost. And then on the saving side, there'll be some decline in the liability insurance. And I was just kind of a rough estimate of what those two might, numbers might be.
Councilmember Snipper, I think I'd need to look that up, but I can say unequivocally, the cost of accreditation exceeds what we would say about police liability insurance. I don't have the exact figure in front of me, but I could get that for the council tomorrow.
Okay, that would be helpful. The last thing I want to say is I continue to support enforcement of traffic laws for bicyclists. I would have said this before my accident, certainly now even more so. This lady was yakking on her cellphone, probably didn't see me as a result. And in addition, she rolled right through a stop sign and she wasn't going very fast, but you know, it doesn't take much. But I am concerned about bike riders who, you know, don't stop at stop signs and, and don't even, don't have helmets on, riding around the city. So I just want to encourage the police department to continue its enforcement of bike rules. I fully support it.
Let me say, as a result of some of the comments I made and you made on bicycle enforcement earlier this year, I met with the Safe Roadways Committee and believe it or not, on Thursday, we're going to be doing a taping for our cable show on bicycle safety and what we want our citizens and residents to be doing and obeying the rules. So there'll be a tape on that and we'll be coming out and had nothing to do with your accident, I assure you.
Well, thank you very much. I'm glad to hear that you are in fact moving ahead with efforts in that direction. I really support them. And as I said earlier, I'm very pleased with the police department this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wright?
Two comments. First, I'd say a huge thank you to you and all the officers for all their hard work and putting themselves in harm's way every day. We greatly appreciate that and I hope that you communicate that to them. The second is just, I'm glad the speed cameras are, appear to be working because that will ultimately slow people down and make our streets safer, which is the objective. Happy that you answered already the question about accreditation. One thing I was curious about is, do you know if Part 1 crimes in the surrounding areas are down like ours or are they up? What's going on with that? Because I'm just asking because I'm thinking they're down here because we're doing a very good job and criminals are sort of making a conscious decision not to commit those crimes here. And wondering if it's actually true that they're committing them in surrounding jurisdictions instead or what's going on? Is it just a trend that crime is down?
Crime's starting to go down in Montgomery County. I think, that was the exact words I think I used when I talked to you about the 11%. I like to think we have pushed some of the crime out. Obviously, if you look at the first four months this year, robberies are down, burglaries are down. And we, we have seen it, the biggest crime has been the vandalisms. You know, we had about three streaks of, you know, nights where they hit cars in several areas in the city, but crime is down. You like to think when you've got a lot of cars out there and plainclothes officers, as I had stated previously, that's making a difference. And I think it is making a difference. Crime did go down in PG County and it's just starting to drop in Montgomery County. So I think all the jurisdictions are starting to see some drops in crime. The economy hasn't, at least at this point, made a difference in some of the crime that you sometimes see when the economy is going bad, as it's done. So I think you're correct in your assumption, that's the assumption I have right now, that we have chased some of the crime away. And with some of the good cases we've worked, it's not, whatever reason, I don't think they're coming here like they once were. Richard, I'll look for your little comments. You're doing such a good job in reducing it with the detectives.
Well, we are communicating very well with the other jurisdictions and working together since it's Asian robberies and a couple of other big, big commercial robberies that have been going on. We're communicating well with the other jurisdictions, working as a team. And I think because of that, we are reducing the crime and sending a message out that the crime is.
The other thing, which I would praise the patrol division, we've been lifting prints at a lot of crime scenes and autos and all things and leading arrests there. And that comes from experience. The more the officers get experience, we've had a lot of good hits this year from submitting prints when we take prints at a crime scene. That's why it's so important that people recall when the crime has occurred and we could come out and if they took the time to be late for work and let us print the car, it makes such a difference. We're getting some good hits. I mean, technology has caught up to the bad guy. It is like TV in some respects, we do get hits. It doesn't go in five minutes, it takes us about, sometimes several months, but we do get the information eventually.
You don't carry around a little portable fuming chamber?
No.
And also, Chief, isn't it true that it's not so much shifting of crime from one location to another, it's actually arresting people and convicting them?
Right.
And there have been increases in both, some fairly high-profile and important cases have been solved.
You make arrests like the detectives and patrol division are doing, and you get convictions, and we are getting convictions, that takes people off the street. They talk when they get up to jail and they say, "Yes, they've got plainclothes guys down there now. There are more patrol cars running around. Now they got them on bikes." And that gets, the word does spread and they'll go elsewhere. We're a small area and you can police this area fairly well when we're not real busy and everybody's tied up. So the visibility is paying off.
Glad to hear that we're going to do a presentation on the ComStat program. As a council member, I'd like to have a presentation and very excited that you're going to do that with the community. I'm sure you'll get many takers, so. I'm curious about your opinion around the Safe Tacoma money. So we spent the money, I know at the, when we made that decision, you thought there might be other ways to spend that money more effectively and, you know, you oversee it and just curious about your opinion on how things have gone, how the money's been spent and what do you think, whether you think it's been effective or not or that sort of stuff.
Well, they're still spending the money. I think it is a social program and I'm in, I'm not in the social, as a social worker. They've made it a social program. They have reached some kids and I think they've done a good job in the areas they've reached. I think it's been a challenge for them for a lot they've done. I mean, I made it clear, I think originally, how I felt the money could have been better used in the police department. We're in tighter times now, so obviously that money's not available, so I don't even think that's a discussion. But I think it was a social program. If you will my honest opinion, I believe we could have better used it in the police department. I'm not going off of that, but we've worked good with them because that's what the council directed us to do and I think we did it. But I think the money could have been better used. I think at the time, the original council, which was before I got here, authorized it. It was a good thing. I think the direction the department's going today, I don't think it would have been a need. And I think we've proven that, so.
Okay. Just curious, have you seen up around New Hampshire and universities since the new fences have been put in? Finally, they're all up, it seems like, and they look nice. Have you seen a reduction in pedestrian issues in that area yet or is it too early to say?
Lieutenant Bowers, I'll let you answer that one.
I think it's still a little too early to say. We've had some, still have some pedestrian issues up there and I think part of it comes from education. I know that the CCSA program works hard on educating people and there's a couple of different programs for educating people about crossing the roadway safely. But there's still some issues and occasionally you'll see some folks that walk out in the middle of the block and are hanging on to the fence and you've got to get them out of there. So it's still a learning process, but hopefully it smoothes itself out.
And then two questions, they may be for you or for the city manager. One, I've mentioned this recently before, is just the ability to do anything with the city online. So that would include purchasing your parking permit as opposed to having it mailed in or like I did today, I needed a bulk trash pickup, so I had to drive up to Oswego and pay $10 to have them. I think those are things that should be done online, including the permits. Probably make it a little bit easier on the staff, also it's probably less time-consuming. And then last, I just wanted to make sure, there's been a fair bit in the press about the disability issues in Montgomery County, where it seems that there's been a very generous policy and you might even argue that some people have taken advantage of that disability policy in Montgomery County. I just want to make sure that it's clear to the public here in Tacoma Park. I mean, the numbers that I heard in Montgomery County on the NPR story were astounding. And I just want to make sure that that's, the increase we're seeing is the result, I think, of one situation, right? And, or is, do we have a similar issue? And I'd like just to have some clarity around that. Are we in the same boat as Montgomery County in terms of percentages and that?
I think what you were referring to, Councilmember Wright, in terms of the one individual, was the workers' compensation jump. That was primarily attributable to one case that did involve a police officer. In terms of the disability retirement, I can't really address Montgomery County, it's all I know about, it's what I read in the paper. We certainly don't have, thankfully, that rate of percentage of our officers who are going out on disability. We're a very small plan, small group. Essentially, the number of disability retirements has exceeded what was originally envisioned when the plan was created or implemented in about 2001. Once you have that rate of disability, quite frankly, unless someone has miraculous recovery, that's a problem that you carry forward. And that's what we've experienced. Most of the individuals who are receiving disability payments are relatively young. At this juncture, we don't have any reason to think that they will be able to return to work, so it's a problem that is going to continue to plague the plan, quite frankly. We do require annual medical certification to make sure that, that that disability has continued and they're not able to return to work. It has been an issue that we have been talking to Local 400, the bargaining unit that represents many of our sworn police officers over the past year. And that issue will be coming to resolution one way or another because the deadline was to try to get this resolved by July 1st.
Is there any way for us to, not with Montgomery County's plan, but is there any way for us to piggyback on to, or join, because part of the issue is if we joined a larger pool, you know, you could argue that right now, we happen to be disadvantaged because we're a relatively small pool and we have a high percentage relative of officers who are out. Is there any way for us to join a larger pool or somehow, I don't know, with the state police or some agency that?
That was actually kind of what the agreement with Local 400 was, was to spend part of the last year examining what other plan options there are. One, I think we did look at was Montgomery County, but obviously, when they have 20-year retirement, from a cost standpoint, that wasn't very workable. The most viable option that we discussed with Local 400 was joining LEAP, which is the state plan. As I mentioned earlier in this budget process, those sessions, I would say, with Local 400 are still continuing. One of the issues with the state plan is that there is essentially an ongoing cost of about 30%, which seems low compared to what is in the proposed budget. The downside is the state will not take anybody who is currently in pay status. So by the time we factor in what would be necessary to provide benefits to those, not only who are still working here, but to those who are drawing disability benefits, that essentially translates into about an effective payroll rate of about 46%. So once again, we're sort of finding ourselves almost a victim of the circumstances that no matter what plan we move into, we still have a financial responsibility and obligation to take care of those who are already getting done with us. And that's not a problem. Regrettably, that's likely to resolve itself anytime soon.
I might add that being very familiar with the Montgomery County plan, and I retire normally, we are much stricter here in working with Barb and the committee. The standards are higher here and injuries are a way of life. Unfortunately, one of the things I've seen over the last 40 years, officers get injured more seriously today and that's not a good thing. But one of the things we are examining in the department is a wellness program, try to keep our officers healthy and continue to look at that. And that's important and most departments that are doing that today seem to reduce disability costs and that is something we are examining.
I think it's important that we have the annual medical evaluation because I think that was one of the issues in Montgomery County was people are getting the disability retirement and then a lot of them had, you know, other jobs where it was really not a legitimate reason.
Councilman Wright, it wasn't very, as somebody was very familiar with, it wasn't managed very, a lot of the things that we're doing here were not being done there for years and it was a problem that the unions were able to negotiate even better benefits. It was more, it was better for the officers to go out on disability. Actually, when I went out and retired and it's been about 15 years, a lot of people looked at me, "You're going out normal? What's wrong with you?" And if you look at some of the things in the paper, most of the people have gone out the other way, but there's a lot of people that believe that, and finally, they've come to light now and they are changing the system there. But being familiar with that system and working with Barb and the staff here, we have higher standards. And obviously, if somebody gets injured, we're going to protect them and make sure they're, but we're, you just don't let people go out. I could go into lots of cases that doesn't apply to us here tonight.
I mean, and that's not to say, I think officers legitimately get injured, it's a dangerous job and when that happens, we have a responsibility as a city and a group of citizens that are protected by those officers to make sure that they and their families are provided for.
Councilmember Simmons?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all for being here tonight and thank you also for the changes and the growth that we've seen in the department over the past year. It's refreshing to hear things like the cross-jurisdictional communications and actually, not just hear it here at the council meeting, but also to see it in our community. And it's, each one of you and your departments has demonstrated to the community some growth in the last year and appreciate that. I, one of the things I hear the most about is the communications between the department and the community and how much the community appreciates that, the information that they get about the crimes that are going on. I think there was some initial shock when they started to get that information, but I think that they've adapted to that and understand that these things going on in our community every day. And it's, yet I think it's reassuring to the community to see that the police department knows about the ones they know about and is taking action and is, in many cases, closes cases. So again, I thank you for that information and that's why I think the ComStat program is, is really important. I know the chief is texting his wife so that she knows where he is. You mentioned that the ComStat was not going to cost any additional money, but I believe there's, must take some software or something to do the mapping and stuff?
Yes, it doesn't, we got it all on grants.
Okay. Thank you for that. Just two last things. I know that the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Committee has talked about, you know, a desire not to be enforcing drug laws. And yet, when I walk down my streets in my neighborhood and some of the other parts of Tacoma Park, I kind of share, Councilmember Barry's concerns about the way things look and not just buildings, but in my case, the appearance of some of the people in the neighborhood who are selling drugs. And they also, I don't think it's advantageous to my neighborhood or some of the other neighborhoods in Tacoma Park to have thugs on the streets selling drugs and potentially participating in gang activity. I know that drug enforcement has not been a emphasis of the department in past years and I just wonder if that's something that we're doing now, if we're going to be doing it more aggressively.
Well, drug enforcement has, has been a part of our reduction of crime. We spent most, when we first got here, you and me had talked about what's going on on Maple Avenue and we've been pretty aggressive, as you well know, in moving the people out of that area. We're coming back and with warm weather now, we're seeing the crowds. Our tactical unit, our patrol units are paying special attention around the store where all the hangar outs and where the drug dealers are. So it's going to be an emphasis as we go into the spring and summer for any kind of violations of law in that Maple Avenue area.
Yeah, and I think the community should know what a difficult problem it is because, as you know, 90% of the people hanging on the streets on Maple Avenue and on the street corner there in front of the stores are not selling drugs, they're not thugs, they're not problems. But unfortunately, there are some that are mixed into the groups that are problems. And, you know, we recognize it's a difficult situation, but it's also something that we hope you'll be able to address this summer and ongoing.
We will continue to address it.
Appreciate that. And lastly, I just want to, since we've talked about Safe Tacoma and you voiced your opinion, I will voice mine that I think social programs are important. And I especially like the program that Safe Tacoma is doing now of sending some of the young men and... that Safe Tacoma is doing now of sending some of the young men and women who do not have the skills to get good jobs and sending them to the carpenters' union to get some training so that they can perform better in society and maybe not go into some of the illicit activities that you could have used the money to put them away with.
Well, I don't oppose the program. I just don't see social programs within the police department, that's all. I mean, I think they have had some good successes, and I commend them for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
There's one thing I, the reason I was looking, I just got an emergency text. They have now raised the level on the swine flu to level four, which means they are now saying it can be spread from human to human. And that was just done. I just got a text from our chairman of our emergency committee, and I think we want to share that with you tonight as you go home because it has just changed, and this came out last 15 minutes. And he got it to me, and I wanted to share it with you. And I apologize for looking at it, but this time of night, I know it's an emergency.
Is that on a scale of one to five or one to 10?
It's, it's, I'm not sure, but we're now at four. I think at two yesterday.
If we could get an email or an email just about.
I thought it was on one to 100?
Yeah.
Anyway, this level, where before they weren't saying it could spread human to human, they're now saying that. And they've raised the death total in Mexico tonight again.
I'm sure we'll see it in the papers in the morning.
If you can go on Google Maps, and they actually have a map of all of the cases in the United States and Mexico suspected in particular cases, it's really interesting. And there aren't any in Maryland.
We're gathering intelligence as quickly as we get it. We'll be obviously putting it out, and we're beginning, which you got tonight, we'll be putting it on the one page in the morning. We'll work on getting it off, citizens can have it. I'll put it on the alert. I have to follow the web, our webpage so they can get that information.
Okay. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for your active work.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. The last scheduled item for this evening is the beginning of a reconciliation discussion. I'll remind my colleagues that we're going to be back here again Thursday evening, and we have some final discussions about the Speed Camera Fund and the Community Center Fund, and then we have scheduled time for reconciliation requests. We're about an hour later than we were hoping to be this evening, so I wanted to give us an opportunity to put some reconciliation ideas or items on the table, requests for information, requests for anything that we might need Thursday evening for continuing the discussion. And if I can just start off, one thing I wanted to make sure of was that for the discussion for Thursday evening, that the city manager will have a reconciliation list so far of any items that have come up to date. I know we have a couple of items, including the potential one for the change in the health insurance that may not, we may not have a clear answer, but at least to put a marker there to delineate that. And one item that I just kind of wanted to put out there as a concern that may be more of a concern for a year from now, but it's the concern that I always bring up, I think I've brought it up every year that we've done the market adjustments in the pay plan, and we have a built-in floor of, at this point, it started out, I think, at 2.5%, and then is now at 3%, where we take the figure for, I think it's December, for the way, for the market salaries for government workers in this area, and that, and that kind of sets the market rate adjustment that we use in the plan. But if that rate falls below 3%, we still go with 3%. And the answer has always been that, oh, well, it kind of, it all comes out in the wash, you know, a couple of years down the road when we do the study and deal with it. And that has generally been the case. But I can see in our current situation where a lot of governments are not giving COLAs, and doing that will affect the market rate that will be reflected in coming years, December figures that we see, that it's entirely conceivable that there will be maybe flat market on wages and salaries for government workers in this area. And that if we, if we continue to have that 3% floor, we will be in a situation where we are rapidly accelerating above the market if we stick with that. And so I would just like to put on the table that we need to be aware that we may need to think about in the, in long-range planning, possibly understanding how we might deal with that in the future, and whether that involves negotiation or renegotiation with the unions. I've always had this concern, and I think the current situation is going to take us to a place we haven't been before, and is going to make that something that we're going to need to deal with. So I'd just like to put that out there now rather than getting a year from now, and then people kind of go, "Oh, what's going on? We're forced to give a 3% market, and the market hasn't gone there." And then in terms of the current reconciliation discussion, what I'd appreciate having from the city manager is a sense of what some, some various levels of reduction in the tax rate would mean, and her recommendation for how to accomplish those. I'm thinking particularly of a half-cent reduction, a one-cent reduction, and a two-cent reduction. And my recollection is that, our understanding is that a half-cent overall funds means about And in, in thinking about those, I recognize that there's going to be a level where it's possible to, I'll say, shuffle things around, change some estimates of things, pull a little bit tighter numbers on expenditures, maybe say, well, we won't, we'll, we can, we can take some money off of the money that's set aside for salaries because we know that positions won't be filled, and we know we always have, those numbers always come in what's under, what's budgeted. So, you know, we can accommodate that at a certain level before you start to get to a level where it's, okay, now we're talking about people's, people's jobs, a reduction in force at some point. And I'd like a kind of a sense of where that tipping point is reached, where we can move things around and do it without saying, okay, somebody's going to not have a job. A clear understanding of where we get to that. So I'd appreciate that information because I think we, I think we need to, at the end of this process, not keep the same tax rate as last year, given the 10% increase that was a nine-point, nine-point-something percent increase, 9.8, because of the 10% effect from how assessments roll through every year and the delaying effect with the 10% cap. So I know that I want to end up with something other than the same rate that we had last year. I want to be lower, but I don't have a clear sense of how much lower.
Can I piggyback on that comment?
Yes.
I too have the exact same concerns that Bruce has raised. I'd like some, think about something on the way the market adjustment works. Inflation will be either flat or it's conceivable, and some month-to-month, year-to-year comparisons, inflation could be negative. And we would be in a, I don't think we'd be in a good position. It's not really a problem for this year, but I would like people to know that we're thinking about it. It's much more likely to be in the future budget year. So yes, I support that, too. And then the thing that Bruce was getting at, I have a slightly different thought on it. I'd like to see about reducing the unrestricted reserve percentage. I'd like to see, what I would like to see specifically is something I raised earlier, which was somewhat the way an escrow account works, where the bank tells you what the low month is, and then you, you know, plan the, your reserve to make sure that you have enough to cover the low month plus a cushion. So I would love to see, even if it's done quarterly, some kind of analysis that looked at previous years, the flow of revenues and expenditures, to see if we could identify what that low period was, add a cushion to it, and then use that as our, as our reserve. I would also like to see an estimate of, since the expenditures appear to be, overall, less than our budget, I think we might consider some kind of adjustment in the reserves to account for that. Let's say it's a couple of percent, then it may mean that we could keep our unrestricted reserves a little, a little bit lower because we anticipate that our actual expenditures will be lower budgeted expenditures. If folks don't feel comfortable reducing unrestricted reserve, I suggest we move some money into some kind of capital expenditure fund or another fund like that so that it isn't sitting as an unrestricted reserve, but it's in something that we anticipate that we would use it for, such as the public works doing the forward funding of some stuff instead of taking out a bond. But those are the sort of two general things I'd like to see some information on. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Clay, and then Councilmember Wright.
Just a reminder that, I think it was last week, I suggested that we fund the indicators project out of the $50,000 Affordable Housing Fund. It's one of several pots of affordable housing money that we have in the Housing and Community Development budget, and that's $50,000 that we actually hadn't identified any programming for, which I think actually is something to consider when you have budget items that you don't actually have any programming designated for. And then also that the Folk Festival has requested $5,000 in, in support for this year. And the comment that I wanted to make about that and maybe other entities that might need some help is that I actually wouldn't mind funding that out of reserves because, and particularly in the case of the Folk Festival, they don't intend on asking for money year after year. They've, they're looking at loss of sponsorship well over the $5,000 rate. And I think probably all of our partners are going to be facing that, and we, I don't know how much sponsorship the Fourth of July parade gets, but the, the, what's the downtown one called?
The Street Festival.
The Street Festival, thank you. Brain dead. And it's only 10:38. I think that's something to consider, and I think one of the things about looking at the things that we have to do because of our economic issues, you know, that wouldn't have to go into the operations budget would be, would be helpful. And the other thing that I would suggest also, not out of the operations budget, but maybe spending some of our reserve money for, is some food and utility and other support ordinarily. I'm not a big supporter of spending city tax dollars on social service activities because I do think that, you know, that is a county role, but I think over the next year at least, and probably a couple of years, we're going to have some people in the city that are going to be very hard-hit, and we should think about how we should make sure that those folks have food and that they don't get the utility shut up. I think, you know, it's $10,000 right now that we're putting into the Adventist Community Services Fund. I noticed that, I saw, maybe it was in the newsletter today, that we raised $8,500 in donations from people in the community, but I think I would certainly support making a short-term commitment during this time when we have such high unemployment. And I just don't want to see folks go without food or for, you know, lack of being able to pay their utility bill that, you know, we might have senior citizens who are overheating in their homes this, this summer or being cold and, and not being able to turn on the heat. So, so I wanted to put that out there. And we have three open positions in the Recreation Department, and I still really feel like they're, they're heavily staffed at the, at the top end, and I think maybe that's something that we should look at as well. Thank you.
And if I can just add on some of your comments on the, like, on the Folk Festival, I got the copy of the request tonight for that, and I also got a copy of a request from Liz Lerman Dance Exchange. And it's not clear to me whether that's, whether that's aimed toward any of the grant process that we've outlined, or whether that's a request for something in the budget, but I did want to make people aware that that had come in as well. Councilmember Wright?
I had a number of items. I'm supportive of many, Councilmember Clay mentioned also. So I'd be supportive of the Folk Festival, and I had it written down as maybe giving $15,000 to the Man of Food Program, but I'm open to other ideas. I think it is a situation where we would not commit to this as an ongoing expense, so I wouldn't think of it as ongoing operations. But we are in a very hard economic situation this year and maybe next year, but hopefully it will turn around in the future. I'm optimistic that it will. I think we owe it to make sure that the least fortunate among us have some basic needs provided for, and we can do our small part to help in that. I'd like to see, as I've said before, the city go to 100% wind power this year. I would also vote for funding a position that we've talked about in the past and is often cited for a reason why we're not able to execute on many of the environmental programs that we'd like. And I would cite the quote of, "It's the fierce urgency of now" related to that, and that I think every year we delay, the longer, the further behind we'll get, and the steeper road we'll have to climb in the future. So I would vote for funding the environment, an environmental position. I think I would, I would opt for that to be a position that reported directly to the city manager because I think it's something that cuts across all aspects of the city. But I also know that there's been ideas that it could be in the Public Works Department. I would be in favor of either of those things. I also think that we do need to figure out a way to decrease the tax rate. I don't think we'll get all the way down to making it a flat year or no real increase, but I think we need to try and get much closer to that. And so I've mentioned a number of things that will cost us something and have suggestions also about how we can pay for that. One is that I think we should fully finance the Public Works Department through bond financing, if that's possible. Based on the numbers that I heard from the city manager, the, the funding is incredibly cheap or inexpensive in terms of an interest rate, and it is one of those things where this is a facility that will be used by the community for many years into the future. And so why would we put $500,000 now on the current tax burden when we can spread that out over the years in the future and more align it with the useful life of the facility? The second is I do not think we should pay the, I think it's close to $300,000 to repair the two bridges. So I would be interested in taking that off the table this year and exploring opportunities to work with the county and, and waiting for, back from the, the city attorney on the possibility of legally giving those bridges back to the county so they can put it into their normal CIP process. I agree with Councilmember Clay's idea of taking the, the money for the indicators project from the pot of money in community development associated with affordable housing. And then lastly, this is something that I mentioned when we were looking at the numbers last week, but I think Councilmember Robinson last week, but I think Councilmember Robinson highlighted very much with his requests and pointing out the numbers. When you look at the adopted versus the estimated last year, we were 8% lower. And the capital, it's not a, it's not like we didn't spend money in capital outlays. It's real operating costs that we didn't spend. And if we were 8% lower this year versus last year, sorry, in, in estimated versus what adopted this year, it equates to $1.8 million. Do I think we should go all the way down to that 8%? No. But I do think we could do 3% or 4% and that is still a significant chunk of money. And I appreciate that the city manager has given us more detail about what goes into the supplies and miscellaneous areas, but it's not enough at a level where I can make the decision. I think I've come to the realization that it's not really, that's not my role. Instead, I would just say to the city manager, we want the budget to be 3% to 4% lower, whatever the numbers we choose. We're not saying across the board. She may say, I think it's more important to spend money in police or recreation or somewhere and, and just tell us where those numbers are going to come from. And we didn't cut staff to get to that before, yes, there's some unfilled positions, but there's going to be unfilled positions in this coming year, I'm sure. So that I would, to that I would just say, we have to ask the city government to be more efficient and the city manager can figure out the way to get to the 3% to 4%. And I don't think it's by cutting any of the specific programs that have been outlined to us here. And then lastly, I'm also, would be in favor of examining how we deal with the reserve fund. And that is another possible place where we could get savings. So those are my areas.
And while I'm thinking of Councilmember Snipper.
Well, I, I put in my, my, my issues earlier.
Okay, I just want to make sure that I didn't miss you at this point. I can, I can keep going down the line.
Okay, I, I do want to lend my support for the suggestion for doing something about food and utility costs. I support 100% wind power. I think the bond for public works is something really worth exploring and as I also think the environment position is worth supporting. I don't know whether we'll have enough money for, for that this year, but that's a, that's something at least worth additional talking. So that's my contribution.
Thank you. Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. I have to admit, I haven't been taking good notes as everyone else has spoken, so I trust that we're going to bring this all back to us at a future date. So I can't go down the list and say that I agree with this one and disagree with others, but in general, I've heard a lot of good ideas tonight that I do support. And I would just add that I, I would be interested in, in maybe not doing the market adjustments this year in light of the economic situation. I am interested in keeping our tax rate down. I know that, you know, we heard an impassioned speech today during the public comments session. I think that's a topic that I've heard from many residents of the city that are facing difficulties with their property taxes that is compounded with the current economic situation and individuals' job situations right now. So I think it is important for us to try to keep the, the tax rate down or get it lower than, than we have it right now in the proposed budget. And in addition to the many ideas that we've heard here tonight, and of course, we've heard some spending ideas and some ways of maybe implementing some savings, but I would suggest that there are, and I've mentioned it throughout our budget discussions, I think there are some low priority things that have been included in the budget that we could postpone for a future year. And so I would, as the city manager looks at the area where savings can be made, I would view it in light of some low priority projects. It may not be always big ticket items, but I think there are some things that, that can help us to get our, our tax rate down some for this year and, you know, do the, do the things that we do want to have done, but maybe not do them this year. We can't have, can't have everything now. Thank you.
Councilmember Robinson?
Yeah, thank you all for colleagues for some of those good suggestions. I was thinking about the bridges and thinking about the, why counties exist. And it seems to me that they, from our perspective, they exist to provide economies of scale. We're certainly not in a position to fix our bridges, but the county's in a much better position to fix bridges, fix, fixed assets like that. And so I, I'm very much in favor of kind of forcing their hand in some way or another. I don't know, by proclamation or some, some effective means to really bring it to their attention that we're serious about them fixing, them paying to have our bridges fixed and that it's timely, it's timely to do that now because we don't want these bridges to get in worse shape so that they're much more expensive to fix in the future. The market adjustment, yeah, I, I agree that it needs to be phased in. I'm, I'm completely in favor of us being market savvy or appropriate to the market, but I don't know that we need to do it all in one, one step. And I, I think that we need to think very carefully about, about how much additional burden we're putting on our, on our citizens from a tax, from a property tax perspective. And I've said a number of times that there must be ways that we can behave more entrepreneurially and I hope that we can think of some ways like that, whether it's provision of energy services or, or development of things like the city lot. But I'm, I'm in favor of us reducing the tax rate and I'd like to see it pushed down as close to the 55 cent, equal amount of property tax revenue coming in as possible. So I'd say instead of the half, one, 2% that Bruce suggested.
That was cents, not percent.
Cent, cents, right. Down to 55. 55 cents is the, what do they call it again?
Constant.
Constant yield, thank you. A little elder moment there, the constant yield and we're certainly, we're currently at the 60 cent plus rate, 16 and a half, is that right? I'd like to see us, see, City Manager Matthews, you're coming back with the 2, 3, and 4 cents reductions and see where that, how, how you would accommodate that. And it's interesting that the, in this, these hard times that the federal budget is ballooning and we're talking about either pushing ours down towards a flat rate, but I guess that's the difference between federal and local thinking and spending. I, I also feel deeply about the, the needs of those who are, who are in need and I don't want to, don't want to forget those, those folks at all. Environmental position, I'm, I'm in favor of adding either the position or the function of that person. And I'd be interested to see, again, City Manager Matthews, how you can accommodate the function of that position even in a time when, when we're talking about keeping things at a reduced increase or a flat, pushing towards a flat. So I'd like to hear back, hear back from you on that one. Other than that, I'm in general agreement with the rest of my colleagues.
No comments? I'm in general agreement with my colleagues.
Let's leave it at that.
Let's leave it at that.
So we, we will have, the city manager will come back with some information and suggestions.
Just think you have two days to do that.
I would say I would do my best, but quite frankly, if there's not a lot of time to bring it back around. Some of those requests are easier than others. Before we adjourn, as I want to clarify, there's been a couple references to the indicators project. It wasn't clear to me for those who brought it up, if you were suggesting some portion of the $50,000 that was dedicated towards affordable housing or was it full amount? I was unclear.
$25,000.
And was there a, I think Councilmember Wright threw out a $50,000 figure for some, you know, Man of Foods or some other type of social service help. Were there other amounts? Trying to figure out what to put on the reconciliation list. There were a number of you who mentioned that, but other than Councilmember Wright, no one else mentioned a dollar amount.
I think Councilmember Clay mentioned the, you know, some of what we had done in past years for Adventist Community Services.
$10,000?
Right.
I would go at least $10,000. I mean, I guess what I would like to hear is what the anticipated need is. We can certainly, in terms of general fund money that has gone for that purpose, it's been the $4,000 that's included in this year's budget. Any other type of, I know some of the CDVG funds for Man of Food. Other than that, there's been no other city funded to date allocated for that purpose. It's been donations through the Stormwater Fund. And you don't have to give me a number tonight, I'm just saying, I figured that you all have in mind for the reconciliation list, that would be helpful.
And I could, if you would like, I could get some statistics from Man of Food Center for what their experience has been this year.
Yeah, that would be helpful to know what the food support costs and, so how much support does the $4,000 buy, so something like the $5,000 increments or something like that.
We can check because ACS does provide us with a report of how the funds are expended. I just saw one, I can see if I can maybe get that for the current fiscal year and give that to the council. What I would do at this point is just leave the notation on the reconciliation list with the amount to be determined.
Yeah, because I think there may, for Thursday night, at a minimum, it's just going to be helpful to have a comprehensive list, even if there aren't final dollar amounts or there's still information pending, at least we begin, begin to get our hands around those amounts and kind of some effect on kind of the reserve discussion and anything else like that so that we know where there's big pieces that might potentially move around and what some of the other requests are. Because we still don't have to come up with a final decision on all of that on Thursday night, but at least it starts to put all the information together.
What, could you remind me of what our kind of deadline is for the budget of having it approved?
We have to certify the tax rate by the end of May, so the tax rate is scheduled to be certified, I believe, in May '26 or '27.
So we have some, some.
Yeah, we, we're currently scheduled for the reconciliation discussion on Thursday and a budget work session at the beginning of Monday night's meeting for reconciliation. That can always move around to the end wherever we need to put it. So we, we have two reconciliation discussions scheduled. Then the following Monday, two weeks from tonight, is the public hearing on the budget. And it would be good at that point to have some more, some more clarity on where we think we might be heading, but we can have, you know, if we need to, we can have additional discussion that night to finish clarifying among ourselves. And it would be three weeks from tonight that we have scheduled the first voting on various budget ordinances.
Okay, thank you. So maybe you have more than two days.
Councilmember Wright? I just want to say, if the city staff thinks there's a better way for us to spend, say the numbers between $10,000 and $20,000 on what I would consider emergency need for low-income people, they should come back to us. Like if it's not Manah and it's not ACS, if there's a better way for us to invest that money in the city to help the low-income people of the city of Tacoma Park with those immediate, what I would consider most basic needs, tell us and maybe that's a better solution.
Anything else? We're adjourned.